Welcome. Thanks for joining us tonight. It is my pleasure to convene the City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting. It is September 8th. For the record, this meeting is being conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953B concerning teleconferencing of meetings. Councilmember Adam Rack will be participating remotely from 12140 Southeast 15th Street, Bellevue, Washington. In accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act, this location has been identified on the agenda for this meeting. Councilmember Rack, can you hear us clearly?
Yes, I can, Madam Mayor.
In compliance with the Brown Act, have you posted the agenda at the location where you are?
Yes, the agenda has been posted.
And are there any members of the public present at your location who would like to participate in the public comment portion of this meeting or otherwise address any agenda item for this meeting?
There are not.
Okay, thank you so much. Other than that, we do not have any Assembly Bill 2449 teleconference requests, so now we will please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to Item 4, Changes to the Order of the Agenda. Are there any changes from staff this evening?
There are no changes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any changes from my colleagues? Okay, seeing none, we will now move to Item 5, Report from Closed Session from our City Attorney.
Madam Mayor, we had two closed sessions at the special meeting immediately before this meeting. One involved existing litigation, and the council, after a report, provided a direction to our attorneys. The second item involved real estate negotiations at 1144 El Camino Real. The council also gave direction on that item, but no action was taken.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now move to Item 6, Presentations. We have several presentations this evening, so please bear with us. Our first is to present proclamations recognizing Rethink Waste's 2025 Trash to Art Contest winners. Tonight, I will be recognizing Natalie Oh first, and then Ms. Martin's 3rd grade class. So could Natalie Oh, please join me first, and then when we're finished with Natalie Oh, we will move to Ms. Martin's 3rd grade class. So Natalie, come on down. Hi Natalie, thank you for joining us tonight and congratulations on winning. This is really exciting. I have a very special proclamation for you that I'm going to read, and then if you want to talk, it's totally up to you, but you can tell us a little bit about your project if you want, okay? All right. So this is a proclamation congratulating Natalie Oh, the first-place winner of Rethink Waste 2025 Trash to Art Contest. Whereas Earth Day, held annually on April 22nd, is a nationally-recognized day and community-driven national awareness event in the United States and nearly 195 other countries dedicated to celebrating our world and promoting responsible stewardship of the environment. And whereas in celebration of Earth Day, Rethink Waste hosted its annual Trash to Art Contest, inviting all 3rd through 5th grade and 6th through 8th grade students, both as classes and individuals, from the Rethink Waste service area to create artwork using commonly discarded materials collected from home, school, and the community, helping students think creatively about reuse and environmental responsibility. And whereas a total of 27 submissions of one-of-a-kind pieces were received from students showcasing the artistic talent and creativity of youth throughout San Mateo County. And whereas Rethink Waste evaluated submissions based on creativity, resourcefulness, functionality, type of materials used, and adherence to the contest guidelines, while also taking into account, when possible, the artist's age and skill level, as well as their access to art supplies, resources, or adult support. And whereas Natalie Oh, then a 5th grade student at Arroyo Elementary School, earned first place in the individual 5th grade category for her artwork titled "The Race," which was created using various discarded materials and showcases her imagination, collaborative spirit, and creative reuse. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Sarah McDowell, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, hereby congratulate Natalie Oh upon winning first place in the 2025 Trash to Art Contest and encourage the community to continue being creative in their efforts to protect and take care of our environment. Congratulations, Natalie.
My project is called "The Race" because it symbolizes a race to a clean environment. So you can start by doing that by, for example, riding bikes instead of driving around if you're just going downtown or a really close place.
Did you want to say it?
Yeah, would it be okay for Rethink Waste to get a photo with you guys?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Okay. come up now or after I read? Did you bring students with you, or would you like them to come up?
Absolutely.
Okay. You guys can line up right here. And Ms. Martin, you can, yep, be right here with me. I'm going to read you the proclamation, Ms. Martin, and all of your students. So let's see, a little bit of the same stuff, but I will read the part that's just about you guys, okay? So whereas Ms. Martin's 3rd grade class from White Oaks Elementary School received first place in the class category for their creation titled Creativity Enlightening the World, an art piece made of various discarded materials that showcases their imagination, collaboration, and creative reuse. So now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Sarah McDowell, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, hereby congratulate Ms. Martin's 3rd grade class upon winning the first place in the 2025 Trash to Art Contest and encourage the community to continue being creative in their efforts to protect and take care of our environment. Congratulations, everybody. Good work. Congratulations. We get everybody to squeeze in a little bit? Thank you, guys. Good evening, Madam Mayor, San Carlos City Council, and citizens. I'm Nicole Martin, teacher at White Oaks Elementary, and those were some of my fabulous 3rd graders from last year. We appreciate Rethink Waste for sponsoring this annual contest and for recognizing young artists in our community. And we are thankful for the challenge and grateful for allowing not only our creativity to shine, but also for giving us the opportunity to build critical thinking, collaboration, and communication skills. You might be curious on how we decided on building the Statue of Liberty. First, we brainstormed a list of possible ideas, narrowed it down to the educational ideas. 3rd grade learns about American symbols as part of our social studies curriculum, so they agree that that would be a worthwhile project. And learning about the history of the Statue of Liberty was very interesting. We learned that it was sent over from France in pieces and then assembled. We used the same strategy as our model. Once we did the math calculations to figure an approximate scale of how tall she should be, we broke apart into small groups. Some students worked on the torch, others assembled the podium, tablet, the base, the hair, the face, the crown, and the gown. We each made a firework to shine brightly as a backdrop, and in the process, we used plastic containers, bags, tissue boxes, scrap ribbon, fabric, bubble wrap, and snack wrappers. The class was excited about the final project and hopeful that their efforts would be appreciated. We were honored to be chosen as the classroom winner and enjoyed a party and a field trip to Laurel Arts Center. Thank you, City of San Carlos, for this proclamation and the recognition. Thank you. Okay, well, congratulations. That was a beautiful, lighthearted moment for our community, and I appreciate that. I'm now going to tackle a topic that's a little bit more serious. So anybody who is ready to go, you may take off. Bye, kiddos. Thanks for coming. So Item B on our agenda is to present a proclamation recognizing September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Month. When I was last mayor, I'll let everyone clear out for one When I was last mayor in 2022, I recognized September Suicide Prevention Month at our City Council meeting by sharing how my life was deeply impacted by the 2016 suicide of my high school best friend, Jennifer. I could barely sit here and utter my remarks because talking about her death is still very painful and difficult for me. Heartbreakingly, over the last few years, a friend lost her child to suicide, and my elderly neighbor, who watched my kids grow up, also died by suicide. In our society, talking about suicide is unfortunately highly stigmatized and frowned upon, but avoiding the topic will not make it go away. Many believe that talking about suicide with someone in distress will somehow put the idea of doing it into their head, but this is not true. To be clear, asking someone who is struggling if they are thinking about ending their life will not give them the idea to do it. Instead, asking the question will open a conversation that will likely give that person some relief, and it could lead to measures that save their life. For these reasons, it was important to me to again recognize September as Suicide Prevention Month this year. It is especially meaningful that today is September 8th, or 9/8, which is the nationally-recognized day to shine a spotlight on the 988 lifeline, a number that anyone can call, text, or chat to receive mental health support for yourself or a loved one. This month, our City Hall is lit up in teal in support of this month, and we have also coordinated a special electronic billboard along Highway 101 in collaboration with the California Department of Public Health's Never a Bother Campaign, a suicide prevention campaign designed for youth by youth. With bright colors and engaging text, it conveys the message that you are never a bother when seeking help from others. So please look for it when you drive by, and you can read more at neverabother.org. Talking about suicide is understandably a hard conversation. We are fortunate that the San Mateo County Health Department Suicide Prevention website offers clear tools and resources, which is listed up here on this slide. The Know the Signs website at suicideispreventable.org gives additional information about how to talk to someone about suicide, from starting the conversation and expressing concern, to creating a safety plan and getting help. It also includes a helpful review of what not to say. A priority of mine is to continue the work of the San Mateo County Mayor's Mental Health Initiative by having conversations about mental health in our community, including suicide prevention. On September 24th, in just a couple of weeks, the San Carlos Youth Center will be holding a free two-hour Be Sensitive, Be Brave for Mental Health training for high school students in grades 9 through 12. This training will teach youth how to recognize mental health conditions, what to do when someone needs support, and it will give youth tools for maintaining good mental health. As a parent of two teens myself, I recognize that sometimes teens confide in each other before turning to family members, so I like to think of teens as our peer-first responders. The more teens that are trained in appropriate ways to help struggling friends, the better. So you can find out more about this at cityofsancarlos.org/register. The training is offered for free, thanks to funding from San Mateo County and its partnership with the mayors throughout our county who are bringing these important trainings to their communities. With that, I am extremely proud to present tonight's proclamation recognizing Suicide Prevention Month to Dr. Joyce Chu. Dr. Chu created the Be Sensitive, Be Brave for Mental Health and Suicide Prevention trainings in response to an urgent need for providing culturally-responsive suicide prevention and mental health education programs, especially for marginalized and under-resourced populations. Dr. Chu is a licensed clinical psychologist whose expertise lie in the areas of suicide prevention, diversity in culture, and community health. She completed her training at Stanford University, University of Michigan, and the University of California, San Francisco, and is currently a director at Community Connections Psychological Associates and a professor of psychology at Palo Alto University. She is also a San Carlos resident since 2013, and we are so fortunate to have her here tonight with us and proud to have her in our community. So, Dr. Chu, could you please join me at the podium? Hi, Dr. Chu. Thank you so much for joining us tonight and accepting this proclamation. As I did before, I'm going to read the proclamation, and then we'll open it up for some comments. So this is a proclamation designating September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Month, whereas the City of San Carlos joins communities across the county, state, and nation in recognizing Suicide Prevention Month in September, National Suicide Prevention Week, September 7th through 13th, and World Suicide Prevention Day on September 10th to spread the message that suicide can be prevented. And whereas in 2024, 69 individuals in San Mateo County died by suicide, serving as a somber reminder of the urgent need for accessible, community-based resources such as the Alternatives to Suicide Peer Support Group and educational programs like Be Sensitive, Be Brave, and Mental Health First Aid Trainings offered by Kingdom Love. And whereas the Be Sensitive, Be Brave for Mental Health and Suicide Prevention trainings created by Dr. Joyce P. Chu are foundationally, culturally inclusive, and are used as a prevention tool within San Mateo County to educate, empower, and protect diverse youth and communities by connecting them to appropriate suicide prevention and mental health resources, facilitating important conversations, and teaching community members proactive suicide prevention skills. And whereas the City of San Carlos is proud to offer this impactful training free of charge to local teens on September 24th, helping equip young people with the knowledge and tools to support themselves and their peers. And whereas San Carlos residents are encouraged to support one another and help prevent suicide by recognizing warning signs, finding the words of support, and connecting those in need to trusted support systems, including family, friends, mental health professionals, and 24/7 crisis services such as the Mobile Crisis Team Hotline and the 988 National Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, which together received 13,239 calls, 1,028 texts, and 499 chats in San Mateo County in 2024. And whereas the City of San Carlos affirms its commitment to mental health and suicide prevention through through leadership participation in the San Mateo County Mayor's Mental Health Initiative, a collaborative effort across all 20 cities in the county to raise awareness and expand access to mental health resources. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Sarah McDowell, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, on behalf of the entire city council, hereby declare September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Month in the City of San Carlos and encourage members of the community to take part in finding their role in suicide prevention. Presented this 8th day of September 2025. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me. I'll say some brief remarks. I will just say that it's a great honor, on behalf of Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, to be accepting this proclamation. I certainly-- so I'm a clinical psychologist, and I grew up in a community where no one talked about mental health and suicide. But yet, in looking back, I saw it everywhere. Just nobody talked about it. Nobody got any help. Anything from alcohol use to suicide, suicide and suicide-related pain, depression, anxiety, and eating disorders, and nobody-- just nobody was able to support each other. And so later on, when I became a clinical psychologist, I did all the traditional research and all of the traditional clinical practice, and I realized we're staying in our rooms, providing professional services, and actually, the power of the community is where this work needs to be. And I moved here with my family. I have two middle schoolers, and we love, love San Carlos. We've lived here for 13 years. And I realized I really wanted to take what we know in psychology and suicide prevention into the community, which is why maybe seven years or so ago, we created Be Sensitive, Be Brave, the community trainings. I have seen it in action. I've trained my kids to do the same thing in supporting their friends. We moved to San Carlos because I really do believe in the power of our community. I believe it is the city of good living. We are there for each other. And I think that, you know, suicide-- suicide is something that can literally happen to anybody. You think that you're immune to having suicidal thoughts or to have mental health struggles, and that's just not the case. It literally can happen to anybody at the turn of a dime. And the way that we can protect against that is to be there for each other. And so that's what Be Sensitive, Be Brave is there to do, and it's just a great privilege to see it being done in our own community. So thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Chu. And our final proclamation this evening is presenting a proclamation recognizing September 2025 as National Ovarian and Gynecologic Cancer Awareness Month. And with us this evening is Carrie Tam, who is a former San Carlos employee and ovarian cancer research alliance grassroots advocate leader representing California. So welcome, Carrie, and I'll come down there for the proclamation.
Thank you so much for joining us tonight and for bringing us this opportunity. So this is a proclamation proclaiming September 2025 as National Ovarian and Gynecologic Cancer Awareness Month, whereas ovarian cancer is the fifth-leading cause of cancer-related deaths among women in the United States and is the deadliest of all gynecologic cancers, with rates of endometrial and uterine cancer is also on the rise. And whereas in the United States, a woman's lifetime risk of being diagnosed with ovarian cancer is approximately 1 in 91. And whereas the American Cancer Society estimates that in 2025, there will be 20,890 new cases of ovarian cancer and 12,730 deaths nationwide, including 2,470 new cases and 1,420 deaths in California alone. And whereas mortality rates for ovarian cancer have remained largely unchanged for decades, in part because the disease is often diagnosed late, when treatment options are limited and the cancer progresses rapidly. Only 50% of women live five years beyond their diagnosis, and survival rates vary significantly by stage. And whereas there is currently no reliable screening test for ovarian cancer or other gynecologic cancers, making early detection especially challenging. And whereas raising public awareness and increasing education about ovarian and other gynecologic cancers is critical, as symptoms are often vague or absent and may go unrecognized until the disease is advanced. And whereas designating September as National Ovarian and Gynecologic Cancer Awareness Month can help promote early recognition, support research, and ultimately save lives. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that I, Sarah McDowell, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby recognize September 2025 as National Ovarian and Gynecologic Cancer Awareness Month in the City of San Carlos and encourage all residents to learn more about these diseases and support efforts for early detection, improved treatments, and a cure. Presented this 8th day of September 2025.
Everything seems so familiar here, but-- thank you, Mayor McDowell and Honorable City Council. I'm Carrie, and I'm a former City of San Carlos employee and have been affected by gynecologic cancer and now an ovarian cancer research alliance, OCRA, grassroots advocate leader representing Northern California. First off, I want to thank the City of San Carlos for its support to ovarian and gynecologic cancer community during the month of September and for proclaiming September as National Ovarian and Gynecologic Cancer Awareness Month. At the age of 35, I was diagnosed with endometrial cancer and needed a total hysterectomy, which took away my ability to bear children naturally. I was in remission for two and a half years and then found out I had a recurrence that spread into my lungs. At that time, the only treatment was chemotherapy. And in 2022, I had to take time off work from San Carlos to focus on myself and be in active treatment. Everyone at San Carlos was so supportive of me during both of my bouts of cancer and still remain my friends until this day. Although the treatment was aggressive, I'm grateful that it was effective to keep my cancer at bay, and I'm under surveillance right now. I'm also grateful that modern science and medicine is progressing with research so that there will be more treatments for others like myself. But this cannot be accomplished without proper funding allocated to science, research, awareness, and community support. I wanted to take this chance to highlight two organizations that helped me throughout my cancer journey. The first one being OCRA, which is the world's largest organization dedicated to fighting ovarian and gynecologic cancers on all fronts while supporting patients and their families. Navigating a diagnosis of gynecologic cancers can be challenging. OCRA offers a wide range of free support services tailored to needs, such as virtual support, peer mentoring, patient support line, educational events, and support navigating clinical trials, understanding genetic testing, and even finding a gynecologic cancer specialist close by. The second organization I wanted to highlight is Pink Ribbon Good, or PRG. PRG exists to serve every person and family affected by breast and gynecologic cancers. They provide free, healthy meals, rides to treatment, and peer support and education so that no one is alone in the fight. I'm so grateful to have found these resources when I needed them the most. They have really become part of my support system and community. Education and awareness regarding ovarian and other gynecologic cancers are especially paramount because symptoms are often vague or altogether absent, and there's no early detection for most of the gynecologic diseases, which makes diagnosis particularly difficult. Once someone is diagnosed, treatment options are often limited, and the cancer progresses quickly. Only 50% of women diagnosed with ovarian cancer live five years beyond their diagnosis, and the mortality rate have not significantly improved in decades. This is unacceptable, and yet it's the reality for too many women. For these reasons, any additional support we can raise by posting on social media using the hashtag #OvarianAndGYN Cancer Awareness Month or hashtag OGCAM during the month of September would be greatly appreciated. Again, thank you so much to the City of San Carlos for your support.
Thank you, Carrie. All right. Thank you, everyone. That concludes our presentations for the evening. We will now move on to Item 7, Council Communications and Announcements. These are brief items from members of the city council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. Do any of my colleagues wish to share an announcement this evening? Okay, I see none, so we will move on to public comment. Persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. Again, this is for items not on the agenda. We will move to speaker slips in the room, and then we will go to Zoom. Crystal, do you have any speaker slips here in person?
Yes, I have one in person from Dimitri with EcoGreen Solutions.
Welcome, Dimitri. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Dimitri Nowakowski. I'm with EcoGreen Solutions. We are an energy service company certified by the Department of Energy, and we're also a trade professional for the Pacific Gas and Electric Company. And I'm here to talk about the Own Bill Finance Program by PG&E, which is basically an energy efficiency program. So this program allows cities and businesses in the city upgrade their energy facilities, like OLED lights, parts of HVAC pumps, motors, mechanical systems, at no additional cost to the city. No matter in the pocket, all the project costs, all the equipment, all the services is fully covered by the savings generated through the program. And this program has been implemented through energy service partners, like EcoGreen. That's why I'm here. And the role of the partners, not only to bring those funds, get those funds from PG&E to the city, but also to provide you with a complimentary energy assessment and a report that contains all the information about the potential improvements and all the calculated savings. And EcoGreen has significant experience in this area. We consume more than 60% of the program. And currently, we do energy assessment for the cities, like the City of Piedmont, City of Millbrae, Walnut Creek. We completed City of Pacific last year. And our role is also to provide you with all this information so you can make these informed decisions on participating in the program. This program is currently very popular in California, mainly due to the California Bill 2208, which bans the fluorescent lights. So this program also helps cities to get those upgrades at no additional cost, get those energy savings moving forward, and as well get rid of those OLED fluorescent bulbs with mercury and replace them with LED. So to sum up, this program starts with the energy-- complimentary energy assessment provided by the energy partners and the report that enables the city to make the informed decision. Thank you so much for this.
Thanks, Dimitri. Any other speaker slips for in-person, Crystal?
Oh, yes. Please approach my lectern.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. I'm Josh Safran. I'm a 25-year resident of the City of Good Living, and I'm asking you to recommit to the discussion of the gasoline-powered leaf blower ordinance. I'd like to make three points tonight in the allotted time. First, San Carlos has made a public commitment to sustainability, yet right in our neighborhoods, we continue to allow some of the most polluting devices still on the market, and those are our gas-powered leaf blowers. Their inefficient two-stroke motors are proven to release harmful air pollution far out of proportion to their size. So if we're serious about our environmental pledge here in San Carlos, which I know that we are, I feel like we cannot ignore that. Secondly, the ordinance is not about punishing landscapers. It's about helping them. In fact, I feel like a small increase in their rates will help them cover their upfront costs to purchase new electric equipment. From then on, they never spend another dollar on gasoline, and then the savings can go towards batteries. And over time, that puts money back into their businesses. And third, enforcement really doesn't need to be complicated. Once a ban is in place, residents will expect electric equipment. Gas blowers will stand out immediately, and then often, all it takes is a polite reminder from the client or the neighbor to bring things into compliance. To those of you who voted not to take this up the last time it was proposed, I want you to know that I respect your thoughtful concerns about supporting small, family-owned businesses, especially the landscaping businesses, and of course, about the costs of enforcement. But I feel that with rebates and education, fair transition period, San Carlos can protect both local businesses and our community's air quality. It's a win-win for everybody. So to conclude, it's about health, it's about air quality, mental health, and living up to environmental commitments that we've made together as a city. So I urge you to please consider placing this ordinance back onto the agenda and give it some more debate. I think the community really needs that. Thank you so much. I did not expect that.
Thank you, Josh. Any other comments in person, Crystal?
I'm not sure if we're actually getting one from back there. We don't have anyone on Zoom.
Okay.
Sir, are you-- are you writing a public comment for-- no, okay. Thank you. I think we're okay with this. Thank you.
Okay. So moving on from public comment, we are now at the consent calendar. Do any of my colleagues wish to push and pull an item from consent? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through J.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Leighton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Venkatesh?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to Item 10, New Business. Consideration of Adopting a Resolution Approving the Permanence of the Greater East San Carlos Slow Streets Project and Authorizing the Public Works Director or His Designee to Issue and Record a Notice of Completion. With us is Stephen Machida, our Director of Public Works. Oh, Hanya is going to present tonight. Welcome, Hanya Hushmandi, our Senior Traffic Engineer.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Hanya Hushmandi. I'm City Senior Traffic Engineer. Tonight, we are here to present to you an update on the Greater East San Carlos Slow Street Pilot Program, including the results of the before-and-after study and staff's recommendation. We are seeking your direction on whether to make this pilot program permanent or to remove it. Joining me this evening is Mark Spencer from our consultant team at W Trans, who will walk you through the presentation and key findings. After Mark's presentation, our Director of Public Works, Mr. Machida, and myself will be available to answer any staff questions you may have. With that, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Welcome, Mark.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Mark Spencer. I'm a senior principal with W Trans, and it's my pleasure to be here for you tonight to provide the before-and-after study results of the Greater East San Carlos Slow Streets Pilot Program. The agenda of the presentation, we'll take you through the project background. It's been a little over three years since we embarked on this endeavor. Summary of the before-and-after results of what we analyzed to give you a sense of what we found. The staff recommendation. Then we'll move into public comments, and then some questions will be available for that. I know there's also been a fair amount of correspondence recently that's come in on the project, both for and against. I think it's important that we have that discussion and then be able to talk about that in the open forum. So as background, we started this in May of 2022, and the Greater East San Carlos group presented a request to the city council. And following that, soon after, a few months later, there was a series of community forums that summer. I was attending as part of that on behalf of the consultants working on the project. The essence at the time was, we have some concerns. We have concerns about people cutting through the neighborhood. We have concerns about speeding. We have concerns about the amount of development that is proposed right outside our community and our neighborhood and what that might mean for the future. and our neighborhood, and what that might mean for the future. And with all of that, we'd like to take a look at this because we have concerns today, and those concerns will be growing in the future. In September of 2022, we did an existing conditions traffic data study, meaning we went out and did a lot of traffic counts. And we took a look and measured what percent of traffic is moving through the neighborhood. We did that, and I can explain how we did that in just a minute. In February, about six months later, there was a plan put forth of which the council adopted, the Greater East San Carlos Slow Streets Pilot Program. That considered a series of changes in the neighborhood. There were some internal changes, some crosswalk enhancements and so forth, but mostly and the most visible are a series of partial closures at key intersections on Old County Road and on Industrial, such that it would discourage vehicles from cutting through the neighborhood. And you've seen those small white pylons, and there are signs that say "local traffic only." And that's what's out there right now. And they were very carefully placed. In addition to that, there's a series of red curb that was painted near key intersections. And I'll explain why that was, but mostly it's to free up visual space and maneuverability for vehicles, but also safety. Following that, in June, a few months later, the pilot was constructed, and then about nine months after that, which brings us to April of 2024, we did our after-study. Okay? We went out, we measured traffic again. What percent of vehicles are cutting through the neighborhood? What has changed over the course of, you know, this program? We also measured speeds, because we know that was a concern that was brought up. And then following that, in January of this year, there was an online survey. So let's move on. As I said, the, the initial part of the program goals really centered around speeds of vehicles and traffic volumes moving through the neighborhood specifically. So how do you measure that? And how do you address the program goals? Well, we did these partial vehicle closures of the access at several streets. There are some extra slides if we want to look at maps, and as part of the discussion that we may have, we can, there are some visuals that we can add to this as well. So the methodology, we had a series of cameras placed all over on Old County Road and Industrial. And this very entertaining graphic here shows a dozen green camera locations. We also, as we have the video taken from that, it's not just counting cars. We measured, we took a look at license plates. Now, I don't care whose car it is. We're not actually doing this for any privacy issue. We take partial, you know, three digits, the last three digits of a license plate, and says, hey, if you turn at Montgomery and Industrial, where does that car wind up? And if you can move through the neighborhood in under three minutes, you're cutting through the neighborhood. You don't have a destination within the neighborhood. Now, it's a fairly simple way to look at it, but it's a fairly tried and true way to look at it. And that includes different routes and ways that people can maneuver through the neighborhood. So if there are license plates matching on either side within a three-minute period, that car's just diverting through. It doesn't have a, it probably did not stop anywhere or have a destination from within. And from that, we looked at a lot of the exit and entry patterns for the neighborhood. Now, what did we find as we did the after-study? This is a summary table, and I know this presentation is, is within your packet itself. But after the pilot program was installed for about, and in place for about nine months, there was a 4.7 decrease, 4.7% decrease in cut-through traffic. The numbers have changed. The, the table is a summary of the numbers, the actual counts that were taken, but the amount of traffic passing through the neighborhood did decrease, and that's a good thing. We also saw a bump in traffic on Terminal Way and on East San Carlos Avenue. That's to be expected. We're not decreasing total number of vehicles in the area. We are rearranging them, redistributing them. And hopefully, we're putting them onto streets where they should be located, which means either they stay on Industrial, they stay on Old County Road. If they want to move across from one side to the other for whatever reason, they should be using the streets that are better designed and designated for that purpose, and the ones that are not residential streets or as heavily residential. In addition, we took a look at speed data. Now, one of the things that's important to recognize is there is a neighborhood traffic management program, or an NTMP, here in San Carlos. It's been established for quite some time. Now, with that, you say, well, why don't we have speed bumps? Why don't we have some other measures in terms of traffic calming or ways to deal with traffic? Now, the streets are signed, local speed limits are 25 miles an hour. That's a standard local residential speed limit. What we found is most of the traffic is within that range of about 25 to, one spot had 30 miles an hour. In order to take corrective measures and go into the first level, the first tier of the NTMP, you want to be at 32 miles an hour or higher, or seven miles an hour above 25 miles an hour. That's a standard that's been used. It's been used here in San Carlos and elsewhere. So with that, we're like, okay, this is a whole week's worth of measurements. We looked at this, and we said, speeding is two things. One, is it real? And we're like, okay, there, vehicles are traveling more or less at the speeds that they should be on each of these streets. But then speeding is also something that's perceived, and that's a different matter. If you're standing still, if you're on your driveway and a car goes by, that car's speeding. Is it actually speeding in terms of the law or the posted speed limit? Maybe, maybe not. But if you say it's speeding, it means you may have a feeling of not being safe. That's a difference. So there's a, there's a legal definition, and also what is posted and what's enforceable. But, you know, again, you want to be able to feel safe in your neighborhood, getting out of your driveway, walking on the street, walking your dog, pushing a stroller, whatever you might be doing, you want to feel safe. So when people say, oh my God, I got speeding concerns, we want to make sure, first of all, is it vehicles that are speeding, or is it just, hey, I'm not feeling safe? And if they're not feeling safe, but it's not because vehicles are speeding, speeding, then you sort of look at that from a different perspective and say, well, what does that mean? What do we do about that? The online survey that was taken this past January solicited community feedback, and we had the survey open for, you know, about three weeks. We had 72 responses. Now, there's about 400 residences within the bounds of the survey area in the Greater East San Carlos neighborhood. We had 72 responses, and of those... Okay. So this is a, it's quite an easy bar chart to see what is it that people were saying. 61% of the respondents said, cut-through traffic to be an issue. This is early, and this is like, to say, what was the first issue? Cut-through traffic. And is this a major issue of their concern? Is it noticeable? Is it an issue? Yes. Okay? And others are like, okay, that means about, you know, 39% were saying, we don't, we don't see it. And again, these are just based on the surveys. But after the pilot program was put in place, we went back and said, is speeding an issue? And other questions as well. Said, well, is there a speed issue? The speed issue changed from before and after. Before, people said, hey, it's a major issue or somewhat of an issue. We had 76% of the folks saying speeding's a real concern of ours. In the follow-up survey, that number dropped. The major, people saying speeding's a major, a major issue, that dropped from 43% to 17%. Somewhat of an issue, it went up a little bit. And again, we're looking at 63%. So it went from about 76%, it dropped down, but it was softened, or more people are reporting something in the middle where it's somewhat of an issue. And then the not an issue folks, that number went up with the survey after the pilot program. And when you say, well, how do you feel about the impact of the pilot improvements? Collectively, what do you think about this? And 60% of the respondents said, you know what? It's positive or neutral. And 39% said, I don't like it. All right. But 60% of the folks said, you know what? This is okay. And that's, that's really interesting to us. So that really tells us something. But then we're like, we need to drill down a little bit more, because people who live on the peripheral part, where maybe you have some red curb and you lost some on-street parking, they don't like it as much as the people in the middle of the neighborhood. And you, we're seeing that in the comments that have come back, and that's part of the trade-offs with a program like this, in that as you implement things, it impacts people differently, often depending on where they live within the neighborhood. So we said, well, in your opinion, would you like to see the improvements made permanent or removed? And based on the survey responses, the majority, just over the majority, 52% said, let's make them permanent. And 48% said, take them out. So it's a slight, you know, tilt on the, on the right side towards let's make them permanent. But again, there is some difference in the respondents depending on where people lived, whether they're mid-block, whether they're on one end or another. The staff recommendations. A total of 13 pylons and eight signs were damaged or replaced between June of '23 and October '24. That's pretty typical of the kind of, these kinds of installations that goes with street maintenance, traffic control, and so forth. The residents have expressed a concern that future development in East San Carlos would exacerbate vehicle cut-through traffic. So staff consider that, you have to realize that development has not yet occurred. A fair amount of it is now approved. When it comes online, it still remains to be seen. And I think that also leads to some of the thinking of why we're doing this. It's a concern now, but the concern's going to grow in the future. And what we have now is a program that's in place to not only address, you know, current issues, but also something that's really going to help us as growth comes online throughout East San Carlos. And staff recommends retaining the Slow Streets Pilot Program as a result of that. We're seeing favorable results. You're not going to have 100% of the people saying, we love it, it's great, or whatever. But by and large, we have more positive than negative, and it's a very effective program in achieving the results we set out to achieve when we started the program. So with that, I'll stop the presentation at this point. I know there's going to be a lot of public comment. I know there's going to be a lot of questions and answers. So right now, we're at the Q&amp;A portion of this, and I'm available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks for that presentation. Questions from the council? Councilmember Rack, did you have any questions?
I do, sure.
Okay, we'll start with you.
I'm gonna, I'm figuring I'll let others go first, but thank you. Mark, thanks for the presentation. I had a couple of questions. In terms of the, you know, some of the, I think, one of the initial questions and sort of thoughts that are concerns came up with some of the larger delivery trucks that needed to go through, or the garbage, sort of recology trucks. Did you guys reach out and do any follow-up or survey with any of those kinds of, or Amazon or any of those other organizations, postal, you know? Do we know whether they felt an impact, or they had any concerns about continuing the program or keeping it?
We did not do any outreach to delivery services. I have not heard of anything. I can't speak if staff has heard of anything. I will say with the, with the placement of the pylons, they're set back a little bit from the intersection. So what happens is a vehicle turns, whether that's a truck, or car, or bicycle, whatever it might be, it's, it may not, if it doesn't know that those are there, it's going to see them very quickly, and it may have to wait. So there's usually some storage space, and sometimes you have to wait for a car to come out, or you may have to go around. People have expressed that as like, hey, maybe is, is that really a good thing or whatever? That's not an unusual situation, but the pylons were very carefully placed for that reason, so it, it keeps the maneuverability, and it, it will slow folks coming into the neighborhood, and it kind of channelizes what's happening right there at those choke points. But it's done for a reason. But I've not heard of anything with respect to the delivery vehicles, or Uber Eats, or anything like that. That's just my personal experience. I haven't heard anything back, and we didn't reach out, so.
Okay. And then, I guess one question is sort of the, I mean, I know we have as before sort of the idea, and this may be for, you know, Hanya or someone. You know, given that some of the impact is, we're sort of not seeing, you know, the results given development, you know, do we have an option to say, well, you know, something in between to say, let's extend it for 18 more months and do another, you know, see where things are at that point?
You know, staff asked me that question earlier when we were going through the results, and I put some thought into it. And generally with programs like this, you want to re-evaluate when development comes online. And at a certain point, you'll see, okay, that first Sobrato Building, or Alexandria, or whatever it might be, whatever change is occurring. And then you can take stock and say, okay, has anything changed? Are we seeing more cut-through traffic? Are we seeing more traffic on, you know, the, the other streets? Are we seeing an uptick? Are you getting more calls at City Hall, or more emails, or next-door chatter, whatever it might be? Is that going up? And generally with programs like this, those are the kind of check-in points or milestones when you want to say, okay, let's take a look at this and see, do we need to make adjustments at that time?
And then I did have one, one, I know we're sort of doing questions, I have comments for later, but in terms of, you know, the, some of the red striping and the parking, I'm particularly sort of, I would say, concerned from a standpoint that we've got, you know, one individual who's affected by it, who wrote, who's disabled, that's obviously impacted them pretty negatively. And, you know, my general view is like, you know, if someone, you know, moved there after the red striping was already in there, then I think they, they sort of go into knowing it. But now you have an individual who is, I think, disproportionately impacted, and, you know, we should, as a city, something like this, look at how we mitigate those kind of impacts for people. And I feel like there's, I don't feel like we've done that. So I'm just concerned that we're saying, well, this is what it is, and I'm sorry that you, you're impacted, but we're not going to do anything about it. So do we have any flexibility to do anything about that? Put in, you know, handicap parking in this individual's house to make some exceptions? Because I think they're more impacted than someone who says, oh, you have to walk an extra, you know, 50 feet for a more able body.
Yeah. I, I saw the correspondence on that, and as someone who's, whose mother is disabled and faces similar mobility issues, I am sensitive to it. I am empathetic. My understanding in this case is a couple of things at play to be considered as we, you know, before, you know, you make a change. One is the location of where that, that handicap spot, that disabled spot, that blue zone may go. My understanding in this case, it's right at the corner. And we want to maintain that corner as being open and visible. In other words, having the parking restriction there, the red curb, so that it's visible for motorists, for bicyclists, for pedestrians, for vehicles coming in and out at that location. If you had to put a space back there, and first of all, generally speaking, we don't want parking spaces near corners in general. That's, that's been that way for, for, since I learned traffic engineering, just because of visibility. You want to keep maintaining that visibility. I keep looking at the screen at Councilmember Rack, but it's, I don't mean to, you know, disrespect anyone here on, on this side, right? But you want to maintain those visible, those sight distances at the corners. That's the, that's a safety issue. And safety is at the top of the list of everything I recommend in terms of, you know, do we keep vehicles moving, mobility, speed, and all this stuff? All of that stuff, we want to make sure it works, but safety is always at the top of the list. That's why you don't want parking spaces at, near corners. There's a, I understand there's a, there's a, there's a garage, there's a driveway, there's other on-street parking. It's not an easy situation. I don't want to be disrespectful and say, hey, you just got to take it, and, you know, that's all there is to it. It's not an easy solution. And when you, no matter where it is, if you put in a blue curb, it's not a matter of just putting in paint or a sign. You have to then think, what's the condition of the sidewalk? What is the access from that location to where that person needs to go? It's, it's all connected. It's like a series of pieces of a puzzle that all have to go together. So it's not just designating a parking space. So there's, there's rules. That being said, I, I can advise you and say what you should or should not do. This is a very sensitive situation. But, so I'm being very like, straight down the line. From an engineering perspective, this is how it, how it is. It doesn't mean there's not a human factor or something else here, but from an engineering perspective, you'd want to keep that intersection free and clear of parking so that it works and, and it works with the other pieces of the traffic calming program throughout the neighborhood. So you want to have it on each of those streets. If you open up one street and say, well, we're not going to pile ons on one particular street, the other three have those partial closures, that's okay. That street's now going to attract a lot more traffic, and you've done a disservice and kind of inverted what we tried to achieve, and you've made a better cut-through route and sort of undone the good that was done, so. Food for thought on that. It's a, it's a roundabout answer without giving you a direction, but I'm telling you, from an engineering perspective, this is how I see it.
Yeah, understood. Okay. Councilmember Rack, do you mind if I?
I'm good for now.
Call on others? Okay, thank you.
Please.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for that presentation. I had a question around community outreach. In terms of the postcards, there were 400 residents and 72 responded, correct? In terms of the postcards, was it a scanner? Was it something online? How was that outreach? How was that outreach?
I understand it was an online survey. It was done through SurveyMonkey, it was done online.
Was it a scanner on the postcard?
There was a code that they could scan, or there was a link that they could go to. There was also a phone number, an email of staff. If they didn't have access to a computer, they could call us and leave their comments in that way.
Was there enough turnaround time? Because from the 6th to the 22nd, it was about two, three weeks, correct?
That's typical, our experience is if you open it for much longer than that, people forget even there. So when you put a, typically, we open things for two to three weeks.
Yeah. And then my second question was around Councilmember Rack's comments about the mobility issue. So I understand, and I won't be sensitive to the logistics and the engineering, but this is also a member of our community who's struggling. So I just want to keep that in mind also.
Understood.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. We'll move down to Councilmember Leighton.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, thanks, Mark. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the survey results correctly and just kind of what the data says. So you said it's 400 plus, so 72 out of 400, that's 18% response rate, right, around there? Okay. Of that, though, 48% would wipe out the program, 52% would like to keep the program. So that's a pretty fairly narrow margin on the 18% response rate. Am I correct on that thinking?
Yeah, if you want to take it down to absolute numbers, you're correct.
Okay.
If I were to add one part to that, though?
Yeah, absolutely.
One of the things we've seen, I mean, every time I do a survey, I'm always disappointed we don't get 100% response. Even after all this time, it's just, I just, I want everyone to respond. I get that it doesn't happen. 18% is good. It's not great, but it's not bad. And it was smattering throughout the community, okay? So we had pretty good, like, representation in terms of spatial distribution, let's put it that way. One of the things that, with programs like this, is there are people who just don't respond, okay? And generally what happens is we find out later, they're like, whatever, you know? Like, how come you didn't respond? It's like, that doesn't really affect me, or I'm not, you know, I don't want to take surveys, or things like that. People who respond, it reminds me of like, you know, Yelp reviews or whatever. So people who got something to say, who are not happy about something, for the most part. People who respond and are positive about something, I'm always like, oh, wow, thanks, you know, for at least taking the time to do that. But when people are really, really upset across the board, and maybe we'll hear that tonight, I don't know, but generally, that's what we would see. So it's kind of hard to say what the silent majority is of all the people who didn't respond. But it is interesting to me that we did not get, you know, more of a response or more feedback one way or another.
No, I think that makes sense as well. I guess what I'm, a couple of things along those lines, though, then from response. Anything outside of, was there any other citywide initiatives or things that were done in that area that also could have not been necessarily directly related to this program, such as re-timing lights on industrial, re-timing lights on Old County? Anything like that that may have changed or altered during that same timeframe?
I'm not aware of anything that was happening in that particular time. Generally, January is not a time to implement those types of changes. You know, you're coming out, you're, the January survey time is good for surveys, it's after the holidays. Generally, people are not on vacation at that point, they're generally, you catch them at home.
Sorry, I don't mean the survey, I mean the general study time.
Yeah, no, I understand. Other than that, there's not, there's not a lot of other things going on at the time. So if you're asking, you know, were there other, let me see if I get the question correct. Are you saying, hey, what, you know, were there other, like, signal timing improvements that may have influenced the results, you know, one way or another, that affected how people responded or whatever? Nothing changing really at that time.
And sorry, it wasn't related to the survey, it was just related to the study. So was there anything else?
During the study itself, I mean, you know, before and after, you know, during, no, we were trying to time things so that is really, to the extent that it's possible, you eliminate externalities, and that this is the only thing that's really changing. That being said, you know, when we do seven days of traffic counts or speed counts or something like that, was there an incident on Old County Road perhaps at one point? Probably. You know, in normal traffic conditions, nothing particularly of note or road closure or anything that, you know, Caltrain shut down for, you know, a day, anything like that? No. It's pretty normal conditions.
Okay.
Yeah. Weather-wise too, by the way.
Okay.
It's always important.
And then I guess in terms of what, the definition of permanency, my lawyer brain's going to ask this question of, obviously, there's, keeping the program the same is kind of how I view permanency, but if there are changes that would want to be made, or if there are changes that may need to be made to the program, how does that look like then? Is that done through the Director of Public Works? Is it done through having to bring it back to the council for a change in the resolution? How do those things work?
I don't want to fumble that one, so I'm going to ask Steve. Good evening, Steve Machida, Public Works Director. So there's two early options. First, you could certainly come back to the council. I would probably not recommend that. In many instances, I think, you know, we could do it as part of like a routine maintenance. Or for instance, if it were like some sign changes or some language changes, signage, certainly, that could be done as part of the routine maintenance that we would have on any of our street kind of work that we would normally do. If there is, where we're going, heading towards maybe more like hard improvement, say like curb gutter or concrete sidewalks or concrete curbs, excuse me, that I ultimately would, we'd want to bring it back to council to receive further direction. But, you know, just general kind of placements of some of the pylons or some signage revisions or changes, you know, that I would anticipate or expect that, you know, could be done by my department.
Okay. And then last question, Mark, just for you. And I just want to make sure, I didn't quite understand what you said. Legal definition versus personal definition of speeding and how that may influence the study? You lost me on how that influences everything.
Let me try that again.
Okay.
Okay. With respect to speeding, we get to get a lot, oh, people are speeding through my neighborhood. And then we go and we measure, and we're like, well, the posted speed limit's 25, or prima facie speed limit on a residential street's 25. And the measured speeds follow that. So we're finding that there is not a documented speeding issue in the neighborhood. It still doesn't mean that people won't come to you and say, people are speeding, which to me, I'm interpreting that as, I just don't feel safe, because vehicles are, you know, like I said, if I'm standing still and a car goes by, I don't know if that car's going 15 or 20 or 25. And that's a different issue. And that's what I'm talking about, is when people say, I'm concerned about speeding in the neighborhood, it's a perception of, I don't feel safe. And that's a different thing that can be addressed separately from taking speed control measures. Usually that's things like, hey, you know, what's the condition of my sidewalk or on the street, or, you know, if there's, you know, do I have good visibility? What's going on here? And so we have to kind of look at that and really listen to what people are saying, but then also, what's the real intent? And what's really the underlying issue? And that's what I was trying to get at, is there's a difference? And what we found here is, in terms of measuring speeds, vehicles are going generally at the speeds that they should be going through a residential neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you, Neil. We'll go to Councilmember Dugan now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mark and staff, for the overview. And it's a, you know, we've run this program for two years. I'm glad, you know, we're taking a look at it and really thinking about it again. This is a good check-in point. But it, from what I can gather, we're just being asked to extend exactly what we've already done. You know, two years has gone by, we've received a lot of comments. There's no changes we want to make to this? There's no adjustments we're considering?
At this point, the staff recommendation is to carry forth as it is. It's working as it is. It doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to have 100% support in the community. There'll be folks who are like, why don't we tweak this or do this or whatever? But we went back, and we've been asked to look at this and say, hey, would you, would you move the pylons a little bit, you know, this way or that way? Or would you change? Remember, the original program, actually, the amount of red curb was a lot more. I think there was 19 locations that were proposed. Ultimately, based on community feedback, it got narrowed down to six locations. And that was based on feedback from the community and also figuring out, okay, what's going to still work and achieve the objectives? And I look at it from a practitioner point of view. I come independently and say, okay, how do we make this work? And what's important? I personally, I wouldn't tweak anything at this point. But that's, again, that's strictly from an engineering practitioner point of view. I believe the system is working as intended and achieving results. I think the results will actually improve over time as more development comes online, then the effectiveness will grow. Because it's something that you have that handles matters now, but then as things come on board, it'll also be able to address some of that that's going to happen in the future. At that time, I'd be saying, well, let's take stock also and make sure that we don't need to make any tweaks at that point. And, you know, what we have now in terms of the visual areas around those key intersections where we have those pylons, it's working, right? There's anecdotal evidence, oh, people are concerned about safety and things like that. But I got to tell you, you know, and I've been out there, it does work. It is a change, people have to adapt to it. That's hard, okay? Change is always hard. It does affect the people who live in the neighborhood the most. They live with it 24/7. It's not, you know, if you've now eliminated some of the folks who maybe were cutting through the neighborhood before, that's good, that's positive. But now everyone else who lives there is facing this all the time as well, and you're getting some of that feedback as well. And we knew that going in, we said that from the very get-go, which is anytime you do this kind of program, the people who are most impacted are going to be the people who are living there. And it's a balancing and it's a trade-off of what does it work? I wouldn't recommend a change. It doesn't mean that a change should not happen, or there's other reasons to do that. But from an engineering and planning perspective, I think we have a pretty good program, and I like the results that we've seen.
So when your engineering analysis said 18 red curbs, and then we brought it down to six, that's the right answer? It's working? There's no further opportunity or, you know?
I don't see an opportunity to remove any red curb, if that's the question. I know that's a question that's come up. But in looking at the intersections and how the red curbs are set up now, from a safety perspective, we need that visibility and we need that maneuverability, both, for safety at those intersections. They go hand in hand.
We also got a comment about there should be better signage on industrial so people don't commit to it before they realize what they're going to run into. Is there an opportunity there?
I think so. You know, if we put signs on industrial on Old County that says local traffic only or no cut-through traffic, that's an added measure of discouragement. Whether that will actually change any of the results, I haven't seen quantitatively that those do a whole lot, but they, there is a good signal that those, that this is a neighborhood that is very much one that is local traffic only. So I, you know, I support those. I don't know that they have a lot of measurable effect, but there's no detriment to those whatsoever. I do also caution with respect to placement of signs, size of signs, height of signs, that I get sensitive to the aesthetic part of it as well. Signs can often get overused, and people start saying, God, there's too many signs, it becomes clutter, they're not consistent, you know? And then it just becomes background noise as people are driving. So the effectiveness versus the number of additional signs gets weighed.
And then I guess I'll just follow up with Stephen. Have you guys considered signs? And a second question. As we make this permanent, are there beautification opportunities? Put a planter in or something like that? Is Public Works considering anything like that, Stephen?
In regards to adding the signs, certainly, we want to look at that. You know, to perhaps make it more clearer or better visibility, certainly, that's something we would always consider. Adding planters as a result of putting, where these pylons, you know, probably would not want to do that, but.
I can comment why.
Okay.
The aesthetic is a real issue. The pylons are just that. Could we do something better? Probably. Planters are hard structure. The pylons are flexible, so they serve two purposes. One, if someone had to go over them, or if an emergency vehicle had to get by quickly, if you had to get by, they serve that purpose, okay? So that's part of the material that's there. And there's different materials that can do that. Planters are more solid and really restrict, I'm really worried about emergency vehicles most of all. But also if something, you know, if someone makes a mistake and they go over them, it's not going to be a tragic error. And that's where you have to kind of balance that. The example that we use a lot when it comes to the, something like planters, North Fair Oaks is a community, certainly, there's a fair number of those, and Berkeley is another one, which are less aesthetic, very effective, but also causes a lot of traffic diversion and other issues.
So can we expect to lose 13 pylons and eight signs every year and the associated labor and expense associated with that?
I'd like to think, you know, this is really a question for staff, but generally speaking, that happens more in the beginning, when people aren't used to them being there, and they suddenly just show up. And I think over time, that should go down. But as a cost item and a maintenance item, I'd just like to think it would go down. That's the experience that I've seen as these programs become more mature.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. In the interest of time, I'm only going to ask one question, and then I want to turn it over to public comments. Have we done any communication to Google Maps or Waze communicating that these are slow streets? Or how does that factor into private use?
I understand, yeah, from staff, there's not been communication. I'll be brief in my comment on this, you may have heard that. I have a lot to say about ways and things and how that works and how it directs folks. You can actually notify them and about changes in street access and things like that, and ask them to change their algorithm so it doesn't direct traffic through there. And then hope that, and I've known communities that have done that successfully for different types of programs. So I would encourage, you know, staff to make that outreach as an added measure.
All right, thank you. That was a robust Q and A there, so thanks for the information. We will now go ahead and open it up to public comments. Now, if you are joining us online on Zoom, now is the time to raise your hand. In just a minute or two, we will close that raised hand feature. So again, if you're joining us on Zoom, please raise your hand now. That option will be closing shortly. But we will start with public comments in person here in the room tonight. So Crystal, do we have anyone joining us in person?
Yes, I have two slips for this item. First up is Greg Walker, and then you'll be followed by Mac Schneider.
Hi, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. So I live on Cherry Street in the impacted area with the slow-speed streets, and I was also part of the initial group that helped bring that up the first time around. I would say that it's been a success from my perspective. It's not the perfect solution, but it's a solution that works for that neighborhood, especially where we are in between industrial and Old County. I know I've seen at least a perception of people being more aware when they drive through that it is a local neighborhood. I've actually seen it deflect a car. So I saw when somebody started to turn in, and then they went away and continued on industrial. So I think it is working from that perspective. One thing in all the metrics and everything that was great to see was the perception of speed, because that is not a 25 mile an hour neighborhood. Even my son, who's a new driver, I've told him, you know, you should not be going over about 20 miles an hour here, tops, 15 is better, with all the cars parked up and kids' ability to run out. So I think that the whole program is helping and in the right direction. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Mac Schneider, and then you'll be followed by Neil Shaw.
Thank you for your support on the Slow Streets Pilot. I know this was years in the making, and thank you for hearing my comment tonight. My name is Mac Schneider, and I live on the corner of Montgomery and Industrial. I'm also speaking on behalf of the GSE Board. I was a proponent of the Slow Streets program in its inception. I'm still a supporter today. While I would like to see the program continue, I also think that there are opportunities for improvement that could help to achieve the program goals. I think we could improve the actual barriers and the signage on the barriers in order to make them look nicer and to decrease confusion with drivers. I think that we could reduce the width of the barriers in order to remove the red striping on the curbs. I personally lost two parking spots in front of my house, which has decreased my property value and doesn't seem absolutely necessary for the success of the program. I'd like to see more signage on industrial and Old County so that drivers know when they're going to encounter it, barriers before they turn onto the street. In the current state, drivers get surprised and it leads to backups and games of chicken that are accidents waiting to happen. I see this all the time throughout my window. While people do seem to be driving a little slower, and I've heard that there are fewer big trucks on streets like Cherry, there hasn't been a significant decrease in traffic, and I'd like us to consider implementing one-way streets and neighborhood entry points as was originally proposed, and I think that could have a big impact on reducing traffic. Again, in summary, I'm encouraged by the Slow Streets Pilot and hope that we continue the program, but I would like us to consider improvements to better address the program goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Max.
And Neil Shaw. Thank you.
Hi, all. Thank you for doing this study and presenting the results. I thought it was very informative. And well, I've lived in San Carlos for 11 years and have small children. What is missing from the discussion and what I just want to reinforce here with making this permanent is that there are more kids who want to walk to school. So as school started this, this year, we have over 10 kids who are walking on their own now to Arroyo. And some of the intersections are challenging. We have parents who are like helping, but I think the busiest times are definitely in the morning and then in the evening with rush hours. So anything we can do to increase the safety, I think, is in our interest and keep saying San Carlos safe. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Neil. Any other in-person comments, Crystal?
That was the last for in-person, but if you would like to speak on this item now would be a good time. Okay. And we do have a few on Zoom. We have six on Zoom.
Okay.
Did you want to cap that?
I think we'll close the Zoom option now.
Okay. So Dan Nguyen, you'll be up first, and then you'll be followed by Dimitri. Dan, you should be able to unmute. There you go.
There you go. Good evening, Council members. Thank you for bringing this item forward, and I appreciate the presentation and the results of the survey data. Just wanted to reiterate the comments that were made so far that want to support the, making the program permanent, but I also want to reiterate that this is the beginning and that I hope that there are more milestones and checkpoints to see how we can improve on the program and not just maintain what it's currently at. So we can do a better job of getting, making more, making the streets more safe for the residents and the kids in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Dimitri, you are up next.
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank staff for the, for the presentation. I thought that was informative and thank Council for bringing the subject up to review. I do want to kind of reiterate what some of the other community members have brought up, that, you know, I fully support this program. I do think that in terms of tweaks, like, you know, we can talk about timing and, you know, when might be a good time to think about it. When it was first implemented, I think many of us in the community felt that there was maybe a little bit over. The red zones were a little overdone, and I understand from an engineering viewpoint the, about visibility, but I think it will be great to at least examine whether or not there are some areas where we could, we could think about some changes there. And I also really support improving the signage on industrial and Old County. I think that will be helpful and just on the pylons themselves. And, you know, perhaps we could look at different types of pylon designs and different types of signage to help make it a little more obvious that, that it is indeed a slow, slow streets neighborhood. And lastly, I wanted to just bring up the fact that, you know, 25 miles down these streets that are incredibly narrow with kids playing is, it is way, way, way too fast and that that's something that we, we should consider because, because that, that's still very, very dangerous. And I think that's the whole thing about the perception of the speed is, is, it would be, it would be really tragic to have someone 25 or 30 miles an hour and a kid darting out between the cars. So thanks. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Dimitri.
Thank you. Up next, we have Anna Asha, and then you'll be followed by Caroline.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Hello? Oh, yes. Oh, hi. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for revisiting the Slow Streets Program and giving us all the updates. I've been here for 18 years and I just, there has been great improvement since the Slow Street Program has been implemented. I feel that the neighborhood is quieter and less cars are speeding, but there still are cars that will go 25, 30 miles. You could definitely feel it, perceive it differently than other cars. We have so many cars on our streets that you could only drive one car at a time and you have to like, we always have to like let cars, you know, pass and take turns. So it is more of like a 15, 20 mile, you know, limit. So please keep that in mind. And I just want to say thank you. I'm really happy to see that this is probably going to go forward and we're going to keep this program. And I also wanted to add that, you know, that given all this change that's going on in our neighborhood and the fact that there's going to be more traffic, I think it is great that we are doing this now as our neighborhood is evolving and as all, you know, as the area is becoming more of a biotech hub. So I just think it's great that we have this so as more and more, you know, newcomers come in, they will be aware that our, our neighborhood is a slow streets area. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you. Caroline, you are up next, and then you'll be followed by Jennifer Rossi.
Hi, this is Caroline. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, hi, I'm, I live on Montgomery. I've been here for over 20 years and just want to start real quick with the actual speed laws. 25 is the maximum speed limit. And so the safety is really what you need to do and safety trumps maximum speed limits. And in our neighborhood, I always drive no faster than 15 miles an hour because that's, that's really the legal speed limit because that's the safe limit. Anyway, thank you for implementing the, the Slow Streets Program. It took years to make this happen and the benefits are clear. Traffic is calmer, neighbors feel safer, and even the number of semi-trucks I've heard on Cherry Street have gone down a bit. It's been a real step in the right direction. Because the pilot has worked, we want to see it continue and become more permanent. Removing the barriers without a replacement would undo the progress we've made and expose us to heavy cut-through traffic, especially what's happening with future new developments. This is the right moment to refine and improve. Neighbors have suggested speed humps, street trees, and more attractive barriers with clear signage. We would also like fewer red zones so residents at the end of the streets can get back their lost parking spots. Better signage on industrial and Old County would help too, so drivers know there's a barrier before they turn. And right now, as you've, other neighbors have said, many cars reverse back into traffic after realizing they can't get through, which is very dangerous and can cause an accident. And we still believe one-way streets and controlled neighborhood entry points as originally proposed could have the biggest long-term impact on reducing cut-through traffic.
Thank you, Caroline. Your time is up. Thank you for sharing your comments tonight.
Jennifer Rossi, you are up next, and then you'll be followed by our last Zoom speaker, Jeff Malley. So Jennifer, you should be able to unmute.
Hey, everyone. Thanks so much for bringing this back and for that report with the data. I'm Jennifer Rossi. I live on Cherry Street. I'm also one of the co-presidents for the G E S E, but I just wanted to reiterate some of the positive feedback you've already heard from other residents. I really support keeping the program in place. I do agree with some of the questions and guidance perhaps from John Dugan in terms of thinking more about signage and if there's ways we can refine this to make it even better. I agree with what Caroline just said in terms of looking to reduce the red area for our neighbors, especially those who are impacted and may have mobility issues. And I also want to just point out with the pandemic, the pandemic in 2022 when the first data was collected, that was the end of pandemic. Most, many people in San Carlos still worked from home. So there wasn't a lot of traffic in that first report because there was less people going to work. Now, most people are in the office or supposed to be in the office. And so to see a decrease from 2022 to 2024 is actually a bigger decrease than I think it would have been if there was no pandemic. So I just want to highlight that I think that that's great data to see that it's actually having an impact. And again, I just want to highlight better signage on Old County and industrial would help improve the safety. So I would request a look at that as well. But thank you so much for your work on this and for bringing this back around, and I am in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. And then our last speaker is Jeff Malley.
Yes, hi. So I live, my name is Jeff. I live on Hall Street and I don't have hard data, but, you know, just my observations is that the Slow Streets Program has really reduced the number of pass-through traffic cars. It seems observable to me. So I'm really in support of the program. I like what I've seen so far. I think I agree that, yeah, some better signage would be, would be helpful and maybe pylons that can't be driven over. But overall, I'm really happy with the program and I'm really glad that the, that this is implemented, and I look forward to a bright future for it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. That concludes our public comment on this item, and we now usually open it up to Council I see Councilmember Rack. We'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate all the public comment on the items and the presentation. And a couple of thoughts. First, I just want to, you know, I know Councilmember Leighton talked about the survey and I was, you know, I wanted to wait to talk about it more in the comment section, but to me, I'm a little concerned that we have something that is basically, I mean, I understand that, you know, Mark talked about like some people who respond and don't, but we have like 18% responding and the results is probably within the margin of error. And you, basically, it's a coin flip of people who support it or don't support it. And then I know Mark also mentioned like, oh, we have 60 or whatever number you had is, is either neutral or, or feel positive about it. I think if you flip it the other way, you might say, I think the number I had was 56% felt like there was no improvement, right? They either had negatively or were neutral to it. So I think we're, you know, we're making some decisions on permanency that are, to me, with lacking some data and lacking, you know, I think potentially some strong support. Obviously, we heard from a lot of speakers today and I might, you know, so I know, and but, I mean, and we also heard some ideas about one-way streets, maybe reducing the speed limit. I think, I think there's things that we should still think about implementing and trying out. I feel if we were to go for something that's permanent, we're now, we're sort of, we're not going to make any changes or make any other additions. So to me, I'd rather try to extend the program for a couple of years and look at, you know, can we look at some further improvements? Can we do some more community outreach and try to, you know, I know we're not going to get everybody, but if we had 65% say, hey, we really like this, then to me, that's, that's success versus, you know, a 50/50 result that we're getting from the survey. So I mean, I'm, so I'd be interested to see if the Council would be open to, you know, looking at some of these other improvements that were suggested by the residents and potentially just doing an extension for two years and looking at it again.
Okay, thank you, Adam. We'll move to Councilmember Leighton.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. See if I can articulate this well enough. So I think generally I'm in favor of supporting the program, continuing it because from a, I don't think you need data to know that the East Side bears the brunt of traffic that happens in San Mateo, Belmont, and other areas that can negatively impact their neighborhoods. So I think this program helps, anecdotally at least, to alleviate those problems for them going forward. So I support the program overall. I would say I'd probably agree with Councilmember Rack. The data is not good to say that it's necessarily supportive of a lot of things. A couple other, it's mainly survey data, which a lot of it is, is kind of similar to what we heard a lot tonight. It's perception more than it may be hard data. You know, it doesn't, staff is not recommending changes to the program or altering it in any way. It's recommending it to maintain, to reanalyze it going forward. And I think that may get to Councilmember Rack's request is, I think a permanency is almost the same thing as a two-year extension with the Public Works Director bringing back any major changes to us and continuing to monitor the program. I would also hope and encourage that staff would continue to work with our East Side and continue to always monitor traffic in town because that is the number one concern of most people, right? And I say that about the data and its number one concern because if there's one thing I can say that is the most thing talked about to me is, you know, Howard wants slow streets. Alameda wants slow streets. Garnett wants slow streets. Most of the neighborhoods in San Carlos wants slow streets. So I want us to be data-driven in a lot of these scenarios going forward with staff so people aren't making comparisons and saying things are apples to apples when they really aren't. So that's my recommendation. I'm happy to support this going forward. I think supporting it will still, is almost very similar to a two-year extension, assuming with our direction as a council is telling Public Works to continue to monitor, work with outreach, work with any improvements that need to be made.
Okay, thanks, Neil. Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the community input and, you know, the input was overwhelmingly positive as we heard. So I agree with my colleagues. It's a little bit of a head-scratcher that the survey was such a coin flip. I've mostly unanimously heard support. I know we have one individual who wrote a long, lengthy letter and we value that, and I do hope staff can go talk to that individual and see if something can be done in that situation. The, and the other thing I'll just mention about 25 miles an hour, you know, I've actually banged on that one quite a bit myself because if you're on one of our standard residential streets, especially one where two cars can't really get around the same parked car at the same time, 25 miles an hour seems way too fast. And we run into that all around town. People have that concern. I have that concern. I will just say this, I have learned and been told and believe it to be true that state law restricts us from setting any speed limits below 25 miles an hour. So I have looked at that a lot and that is, I believe we are constrained in that way, just so people understand that. As far as this program goes, you know, it's, we're definitely developing a lot on our East Side. There, you know, significant new developments going in. So I think as a council, as a community, we were amenable to this program. We understand these neighborhoods had legitimate concerns about pass-through traffic, you know, and I believe this will help now, and I think it'll help even more in the future as these additional projects come, come in line. So I'm heartened that I hear mostly support for this program. So I support its permanence. I agree, permanent is a strong word. I don't know if there's a better word for it. I don't think we necessarily need to do a two-year extension, but obviously we can make changes to this. There's nothing permanent about any of this. And I do hope we keep studying it. You know, I'm surprised, I guess I will say, that after two years, we haven't learned anything and there's no tweaks we want to make, you know? So I, I support making it permanent in the sense that I want our Public Works Department to take this over from W Trans and live and breathe with it and get their own experience and, and make it part of our city and evolve over time in that fashion. So I do support the recommendation tonight.
Thanks, John, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I looked at the data, I would say I wouldn't support this, but I also know the impact of the greater East Side and the development coming, so it would be a shame to eliminate it. But I do have some recommendations that some of the community members made, which is less red curbing and more signage, which is pretty simple, I would say. And I would, I'm going to agree with Councilmember Rack and say that we, we do need to revisit it, but I think two years is a long time. I would like to see it back in maybe a year.
That's it. Okay. Thanks, Vice Mayor. I think a lot of good feedback here tonight. I, I agree. I, I do think we should take another look at it, but I'm a little more amenable to waiting until some of the development takes hold because I do think that will increase to waiting until some of the development takes hold because I do think that will increase traffic, we'll start seeing the impacts with construction traffic before the projects even get finished. So I do want to start by saying thank you to all the community who have taken the time to be here tonight and write letters to us. My personal experience being in public office is that when somebody or when our community hates something, they are very vocal and send a lot of emails and call Public Works and call us. And I haven't received any of that kind of negative feedback. So for me, not hearing anything means that things are pretty copacetic and people, for the most part, are happy. So, you know, they didn't fill out the survey, but I think the fact that they, you know, we haven't received a lot of negative feedback also speaks to me that, for the most part, I think our residents in this neighborhood are happy with it or are not bothered by it. I will say that the way, you know, I think about this neighborhood, I think of it as a very unique neighborhood, which is greatly impacted by freeway traffic. It will be greatly impacted by immense commercial development. It will be greatly impacted by a new neighborhood that we're developing in our next item with our Northeast Area Plan. So this is a neighborhood that does deserve special attention and special accommodations because they will have much greater impacts than someone living in the White Oaks neighborhood, for example. So for me, I am very comfortable with this program. I am happy to make it permanent, extend it, whatever, continue it, whatever the word is that council feels comfortable with. I think that there have been some good suggestions tonight about looking at signage that should be a pretty easy thing to look at, I hope. I think we could make a couple of phone calls to Waze and Google Maps to see if this can be listed. I think that, I agree with my colleagues, I think there's general consensus that maybe we should be, you know, as we know that we're continuing this, we should be open to looking at tweaks, you know, taking a second look at the red curbing to make sure that it's right-sized. So I think that, from what I'm hearing, that there's consensus to continue to look for improvements going forward. So I think I too will support this. Councilmember Rack, I see your hand for an additional comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to just follow up after because I had started off here and asked a couple of questions. But look, I agree with you that this neighborhood is impacted differently than others in our community and will have more impact. So while I think we should be looking at more tweaks and looking at, continue to look at this, I will plan to support this, but I am concerned that if we, you know, using the word permanent to me means that, and with no current suggestions from staff, that, you know, we're less and less likely to be looking at it. I think it's going to sort of go on the shelf and not, I hope not the case, but not be looked at, but I will support it because I do think it's a positive impact on the neighborhood and I will leave it at that.
Can I look at our Assistant City Manager? Is there an opportunity here to adjust the word from permanent to continue or something, another word that council might feel conveys kind of continuing to work on this and look at it?
We can certainly do that. I think continues a good word. Or maintain is another possibility and it keeps open the option of continuous improvement and regular evaluations, which our staff tends to do on an ongoing basis as it is.
Madam Mayor, I'm wondering if we could just, if we take the word pilot out and use the word continue, then it's sort of, it adds more permanence to it, but gives us that flexibility.
Okay. Councilmember Dugan, did you have a comment on that?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I, I think maintaining it is fine. I think that's a good verb for it. We're not calling it a pilot anymore, so that suggests it's ongoing. I would say that if any of my colleagues wants to put this on a future agenda to relook at it, I'm, I would, I would support that, I'm quite sure. So I don't feel the need for a specific one-year, two-year thing. I agree with the mayor. Let's get more development done on the East Side and then we'll, you know, have, have more data to actually be looking at if we do look at it again. So I support it as, as recommended and, and I guess the final thing is, no matter what we do, I just think Public Works needs to take this over and Mark's done good service, but let's cut W Trans loose at this point and, and own this going forward.
Okay. So, John, it looks like you've made notes on the, the resolution to read. So would you like to make the motion?
Certainly. Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2025 dash...
Ninety-six.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the, well, approving, okay, I'm going to start again.
Containing?
Yeah. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos to maintain the Greater East San Carlos Slow Streets Project and authorizing the Public Works Director or his designee to issue and record a notice of completion.
Second.
Okay. Any further comments? Seeing none, Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Leighton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Benkatesh?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. We typically take a 10-minute break at nine o'clock. Our next presentation is 30 slides long, so I'm going to suggest that we take our 10-minute break now, if that's okay with everyone?
Great.
Okay.
All right, welcome back, everyone. It's eight fifty-six, so I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We're now going to start our public hearing, item twelve, oh, no, it's our study session, item eleven, receive a presentation and provide direction on the Northeast area-specific plan. And joining us for that is Rendell Bustos. Welcome, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council members. My name is Rendell Bustos, Senior Planner in Advanced Planning, here to provide the staff presentation for item eleven A, a study session for the Northeast area-specific plan. Sorry about that. Also, I wanted to introduce others joining us from the city and the consultant team, Alseve, Lisa Porus, Judy Hawk, as well as Giti Silwal, and Dina Belzer, who's available on Zoom, who are both from our consultant team. So just an overview of what the presentation will cover. Tonight, I'll start by recapping the City Council's input from the last study session in May, as well as input we've received from recent stakeholder outreach held following that study session. And then I'll go through the various policy considerations to the various standards in the plan, outlining pros and cons to request the additional direction. And then I'll conclude with an overview of the related scope amendment before recapping with the discussion questions. So before jumping in, I wanted to recap with a quick overview of what the purpose of the Northeast area-specific plan is, which is a specific plan aimed at guiding redevelopment in the Northeast area over a twenty-year horizon. Following multiple years of civic engagement, the project team developed goals of the plan and outlined the issue areas that the plan should seek to address. And so those are essentially outlined here through the six guiding principles in response to those issues, and those then inform the various standards and policies that was presented in the draft plan. So just in quick summary, the plan aims to incorporate the right mix of uses, specifically introducing housing while still preserving the industrial legacy that exists in the district. The plan also aims to develop parking management and transportation demand management strategies to improve access and circulation in and out of the district. And lastly, to address environmental issues and flooding issues, the plan creates standards to ensure resiliency over the twenty-year horizon. So in terms of recent project history, the specific plan reached what we think is a critical milestone in February of last year of 2024, where the council went ahead and endorsed a preferred land use scenario that calibrated that mix of commercial and housing uses and densities. We then took that endorsement to create a full specific plan that was published in May of this year and then presented that to the council on May twenty-seventh. Between then and now, we started to explore changes to the draft specific plan in response to council input. And we reached out to stakeholders to hear their input, which I'll summarize in the coming slides. And obviously, here we are this evening, where the purpose of the meeting is to follow up on the potential edits to the plan and outline the trade-offs and benefits to receive some additional direction as we proceed finalizing the plan. And so to recap the council's past input, here's the land use map that was presented to the council in May that was based on the preferred land use scenario endorsed by the council. The plan approaches by rezoning most of the area to production and innovation to preserve the legacy of the industrial uses, and that's shown in purple here. It also introduces a mixed-use residential zone, shown in yellow, ranging from densities of seventy-five to ninety units per acre. At the May study session, the council provided a range of input, but, you know, we would categorize it into two buckets. The first bucket really being minor edits that are summarized here, that are textual edits or policy updates that really don't require further direction from the council, and we do plan to incorporate that into the next draft. The second set of edits are more substantive and will be discussed further this evening, and so those are increasing the bonus height at the Delta Star site, increasing the height and/or density of the GW Williams block, increasing public open space, incorporating flexibility for non-conforming uses, and updating the community benefits fee option. So as I mentioned, we met with stakeholders following the May study session to make sure that they were kept in the loop and that we heard their input. So in July, staff met with key stakeholders, where we held focus outreach to those who we felt would be most affected by the changes, so that's the GW Williams Company, who owns a substantial portion of the MU NE ninety block, where density and height changes are considered, as well as board members of the Greater East San Carlos, which immediately borders the Northeast area. What we heard from GW Williams was that a ninety-foot height limit was not high enough for a project to pencil due to construction costs, and that a project approaching two-hundred feet in height would likely pencil. In our meeting with the GESE board members, their focus was primarily on the need for a public park amenity in the Northeast area, and that increased density should result in turn in increased open space, and that any added building height should tear away from the GESE neighborhood. So with that background, these next series of slides will go over each of the specific policy or standards, the possible changes, the various considerations, and then the policy question for each. So first, for a discussion, is increasing the max density and height at the MU NE ninety block, which is, again, primarily owned by GW Williams, and that's outlined here in orange. That has, as proposed in the plan currently, a max density of ninety units per acre and a max height of ninety feet. At the May study session, the council requested staff to evaluate increases to these limits. At a preliminary level, these are just some early ideas to approach increasing those limits, so that could be increasing the density to up to one hundred and twenty units per acre. That is the highest allowed currently citywide, and the max height could be increased to up to one fifty, one hundred fifty-five feet, which is the highest that would be allowed under the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. So one of the considerations that the council could consider is that the height or density could be increased individually, meaning that the max height could be increased, but the max density could remain the same, and that's something that we'll discuss further in the slides. Another consideration is that GW Williams expressed an interest at a height of two-hundred feet, which, as noted here, is in excess of or exceeds the height limit established by the FAA. And lastly, and these next slides will go over this in greater detail, is that state density bonus law already exists and is an approach a developer could take to increasing their density, even if we left our base density alone. So I won't go into all of the numbers, but the purpose of these next slides is to convey how much additional density is possible through state density bonus law, as well as our own city ordinance. So assuming full redevelopment of this block, the site could yield a base density, assuming ninety units per acre, of nine hundred and ninety base units. Based on the level of affordability, the state density bonus law could allow up to a fifty percent density bonus, and that would allow a project to reach upwards of fourteen hundred units, as shown here. And another critical piece to consider is that the density bonus law also affords concessions and waivers, which allow projects to deviate from local standards such as height, open space, et cetera. So we then did this next exercise for one hundred and twenty units per acre as an example, where the base density jumps up to thirteen twenty, one thousand three hundred and twenty units, and similarly, the state density bonus law could allow an additional fifty percent bonus to reach nearly or upwards of nineteen hundred units. And so putting it all together, district-wide, the table to the left displays the number of base units projected if the density were left at ninety units per acre as proposed, assuming redevelopment of both the mixed-use blocks. It reaches one thousand eight hundred and ninety units, and on the right-hand side, if it were increased to, as an example, one hundred and twenty units per acre, that jumps up to two thousand two hundred and twenty units, and that's further increase through density bonus law. And so to recap the benefits, to recap on the benefits and trade-offs of this topic, a clear benefit is that it could yield more housing units, but a trade-off is that for staff, as noted in the staff report, increasing density has an impact on the development projections, which impacts the scope and timeline for the project due to the work involved in updating the projections and the EIR. In addition, more density and height could result as a trade-off in additional taller buildings closer to the Greater East San Carlos neighborhood. And last, as was covered in previous slides, density could already be increased through state density bonus law, and so the policy question surrounding these standards is whether the council supports increasing the max height density or both for the MU NE ninety block. The next standard for consideration is the max bonus height for the Delta Star site, shown here in orange, where we propose a max bonus height of a hundred feet. This is lower intentionally than the adjacent production and innovation sites, which have a max bonus height of one fifty-five, to serve as a step down in transition to lower-scaled uses. As a reminder, the community benefits program is set aside only for commercial sites where they could achieve bonus height through provision of community benefits. And so to recap the council's input on this topic, the council asked staff to consider increasing this bonus height to one fifty-five feet, and a benefit of this change is that it would simply align and be uniform with other commercial sites, but a trade-off, similarly, is that there is potential for taller development near the GESE. And so the policy question is whether the council supports increasing that standard. Next is on open space, so we're going to unpack here. So publicly accessible open space, specifically looking at ways to increase public open space in the district based on council and stakeholder input. The draft specific plan proposed a minimum of fifteen percent of public open space for sites larger than one acre. Two approaches that we see is the approach to increase the ratio for all residential properties in the district, or to create a new standard set aside to capture larger sites, for example, five acres, at a higher ratio of twenty percent. So some considerations, we wanted to note that there are other forms of open space planned in the district. It's not solely a single park amenity that's planned in the district, such as this multi-use path, shown in this slide, along Belmont Creek. In addition, staff wanted to take some time to highlight the lack of certainty to guarantee that a public open space amenity would be provided, mainly due to the deviations allowed under state density bonus law. And so to cover this further, we wanted to highlight the range of common open space types that projects tend to deliver. So this slide, from left to right, scales each open space from what tends to be most certain to least certain. So what tends to be most certain are public plazas that are accessible to the public but have less recreational benefit, and that they tend to include more hardscape and less lawn area, for example, and serve as a direct benefit to commercial or private buildings it's adjacent to. Right in the middle are privately-owned but publicly-accessible open spaces that have a more recreational look and feel with more landscaping and lawn area, but are less certain due to state density bonus law and because of their greater public benefit and onus on the property owner. And the least certain, all the way on the right, tends to be public parks, which has the highest recreational benefit and public benefit, but are owned and maintained by the city, and in the context of new developments, tend to be the least certain because they rely on the city having available land or rely on a developer dedicating that land through a project. So with all this considered, benefits of increasing the open space ratio is that it could yield more open space, but still cannot be guaranteed due to factors just summarized previously. The policy questions surrounding these standards are really two. Does the council support increasing the open space district-wide, or looking at a more focused approach aimed at larger sites? And if the priority is a public park, should the specific plan look at pursuing policies to pursue land acquisition for a full public park amenity? The next policy area for discussion surrounds community benefits, specifically on whether to remove or keep the fee option. What was presented in the draft plan outlines a path of three options, first being a fee option, next being a community benefits agreement, where a developer would commit to delivering the benefits, or a combination of the two. The council's input at the study session in May was that the fee option was less preferred, and that seeing community benefits physically constructed was the preference, but before removing the fee option, we wanted to highlight that the fee could be another path to implementation of other critical priority items, such as open space, and which, as we saw in previous slides, there's less certainty with open space delivery. And so to recap, benefits and trade-offs here, a benefit is that if we remove the fee option, it's more guaranteed that the benefits would be constructed by the developer. Related trade-off is that removing the fee option removes another path for the city to use that fee for other priorities. And last, staff and the developer would be required to negotiate agreements ad hoc, and so that could slow the entitlement process and be less attractive for development. So the question here is whether or not the community benefits approach, we consider keeping that fee option. And last standard, the last policy area here is a discussion around non-conforming uses. The original approach presented in May was to look at just defaulting to the existing non-conforming code that applies citywide, but after hearing from the community and the council, we're starting to explore ways to provide more relief for future non-conforming uses. So there are three ideas listed here. These are not final policies, so number one, looking at extending the timeframe for non-conforming uses to be replaced with a permitted use, where we're currently at six months. Number two, requiring a minor use permit instead of a conditional use permit to reestablish a non-conforming use if they've lapsed longer than that period. And then last, applying these provisions only if a full building or site has been vacated, which is aimed at greater flexibility for multi-tenant buildings that we know exists throughout the district. And trade-offs and benefits here is that a benefit is that it works toward preserving the industrial legacy in the district and provides relief, but a trade-off is that it may prolong the transition of existing industrial uses to redeveloping, and that thereby delays the benefits that we are expecting to see in the plan. So the question here is whether the council simply supports that direction. And so that was the last of the different policy areas, so moving now to what this means for the scope amendment, which, as noted in the staff report, would be presented at a future meeting for approval by the council. So because these changes, the nature of these changes wasn't originally scoped in the budget and timeline, the project team really outlines three options for amending the scope, and it kind of goes from the lightest to the most intensive. So option one is the lightest scope that looks at just incorporating the minor edits, that initial bucket of changes, updating the community benefit strategy and open space. Option two goes further by including option one items plus increasing just the height for both Delta Star and for GW Williams, and the benefit here is that it does not require us to update our projections because the density would remain the same. And last, the most intensive, option three, includes everything in option one, but increases the density, height and density for GW Williams, as well as the height for Delta Star, that because of the intensive nature of the changes to our projections, would require us to make those changes, update our traffic model and the EIR. So this is all reflected then in the cost and the timeline, where it shows that option three obviously has the highest cost due to those updates to the EIR. And so just to recap, these are the five questions in order here again. So number one, related to the height and density for GW Williams. Number two, the bonus height for Delta Star. Number three, questions around open space. Number four, community benefits, and the last, policies around non-conforming uses. And so next step, staff is requesting your input this evening, just based on those various policies, to then inform the scope amendment, which, again, we'd bring to the next scheduled council meeting, to then approach finalizing the specific plan and the EIR. This concludes staff's presentation. Happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you. That was a great presentation. I can't believe you got through thirty slides in record time, so very clear and concise. Thank you. So we will take questions. I guess we can do clarifying questions. I don't, I don't think we need to weigh, well, if you want to put up those five policy questions, I'm, personally, I don't think I'm ready to take a side one way or the other until I hear public comment, but open to questions now. Council member, do you get a seat, your hand?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I guess I might have a larger question. You know, the, the objective to all of this was to end up with housing on the east side in an activated mixed-use district, and to just have a vibrant community where people can live, work, play, not always have to get into a car. That was at least what I articulated at the beginning. I know we've gone through quite a process. I guess I'm struggling with the approach here of our, you know, what I saw just now was there, there's a choice you're asking us to make between a fee option versus, I guess, the, the standard plan development process we've been doing in, like, under the East Side Vision Plan. I thought we were considering something else, which was like, you know, a scoring system where a developer can choose some of the things that we wanted, and that would result not in a fee payment to us, but actually some of the things that we want. I mean, what I'm struck by is our neighbor, Redwood City, seems to be doing a really nice job of getting very balanced mixed-use projects that, you know, I've been observing for years now, and I'm always like, boy, how do we get more of these here? And, and, and I thought they used a scoring-type system like that, and I believe we had a subcommittee meeting once where we talked about all of that, and I'm just, have we lost that? I mean, are we moving away from that? You know, why are we, why is the choice now twenty-dollar fee versus plan development?
Yeah, I, based on my understanding, prior to us arriving at the fee option, staff did approach looking at what neighboring cities are doing, and what we found is, for example, South San Francisco has a fee option also at twenty dollars a square foot, and then Redwood City, as you've noted, council member, is that they have a point system where they've calibrated the number of points towards the degree of the public benefit. We, as staff, believed that the fee option was the most efficient and flexible. With that said, the specific plan aims at creating a menu of community benefits options, and while, you know, those don't have points assigned to them, there would still be some economic analysis to make sure that there is parity between the benefit that the developer is getting and the benefit that the city then deserves in turn.
So through that, we could get less than twenty dollars, but we get these known other benefits that we've already identified that we want out of many of these projects?
To me, it seems unlikely that doing a valuation study would result in math less than twenty dollars a square foot, knowing that costs constantly go up. So that's definitely a key part of option number two and three, if we did an agreement, that we would have to do a valuation study to make sure that, again, there is parity between the benefit of the developer and the city, so it's unlikely in my mind that it would be less than twenty dollars a square foot.
Well, I mean, I guess, but does that mean we then don't get these other benefits that we could avail ourselves from the scoring system? Because, you know, I, I'm trying to keep the, our goal in mind, which is this activated mixed-use environment. which is this activated mixed-use environment. And I do think Redwood City has served as a good example. Have you guys observed something in South City that is working better than the projects that are happening in Redwood City?
I think that, in the answer, I'm Alcevee Community Development Director. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We did look at South City, and we've seen what Redwood City has done too. And we've, and through the process, we, one of the ideas that we presented earlier was for, on the commercial side. Okay, so there's two distinct land uses that we're talking about. One is the residential. And we've, through this analysis, we've discovered some issues that we want to discuss tonight about what we've heard that you and the community want. And so on the residential side, there's a distinct issue that could be solved by the commercial side of it. So, but what we're saying in this community benefits plan, if you kind of go back and look at what we put together previously, is you could have a hybrid approach, where just like you had just mentioned, that if you go over a certain height, and that's what we are saying in the commercial area, that if you exceed a certain height, you can do that, just like with the PDS that we've done in the past year. But you have to provide community benefits. And you can either have those, you could build them yourself for the community, or you could pay a fee. And just as you said, you could do partial. You could pay a partial fee, or you could do, you know, part of it in, you know, physical improvements and part of it in a fee. And so that's how it was presented initially to the council. What we heard at the last meeting, what we thought we heard, is that there was general consensus that you didn't want to go in the direction of a fee. And perhaps we were off on that, and that's what we want to talk to you about tonight to make sure, you know, what direction you want to go. So there's the opportunity for a hybrid approach, just as you expressed, and we had proposed earlier.
Okay, but it seemed to me just now we're being presented with the choice of the fee option or the plan development option, not the scoring hybrid system that I thought we'd been working on. And I agree, I would, I want to end up with these public benefits built by the developer. I think that's the ideal outcome. So I don't really want, you know, these large fees that we then, you know, take eight years to figure out how we're going to benefit the community with. So I like that idea, but it sounds like the decision point tonight is then it's just a plan development, and it's the same lengthy negotiations we're doing under the Vision Plan.
Yeah, that wasn't our intent. And if it was unclear, the good news is, is that because this is a study session, we can work these things out. So that, the idea that we want to know is if the $20 is off the table. We do think that that's an issue, and that's why we're bringing it back up. So instead of, you know, kind of saying there's a hybrid approach available, it is there. It's there in the plan that we had drafted previously. But we want to know if the $20 a foot is off the table, and we want to be able to explain our ideas about why we think it would be a benefit to continue to look at that fee option and leave it on the table and not take it off.
I see. So you're, from the report, it felt to me like you were just asking us for our decision on that, but you are making the recommendation that we leave the fee option there along with this scoring system that a developer could choose instead of the fee?
Not instead. It could be in addition, but perhaps a broader explanation as to why we're saying that is important at this point in time, if you don't mind. The reason that we think the $20 a foot is important is because what we've discovered, and as I noted, there's a commercial side and there's a residential side. What we heard at the last study session that we had with the council is that, and in listening to the community, is that there was a desire for a park or some kind of open space for this new neighborhood. Totally makes sense. But when we started looking into it deeper and we're coming to a clear understanding of what state legislation is doing and what it has, how it has impacted local control, particularly for the creation of new parks and amenities that we used to be able to require as part of our specific plans and zoning ordinances. And what we have found is that on the residential side, any project with a residential, the city loses the control or the regulatory control to require open space. That was our finding when you sent us back. It was a very, you know, it's a tipping point essentially in what we've been able to do in communities across the state of California for many years. So if you have an aspiration to provide a public park as part of this new neighborhood, the way that we believe that gives you, the council and the community, the most certainty is to use the commercial development and the community benefits package over there to have them pay fees over time for, that you can then use to create the amenities such as a park closer to the residential. Because if a developer comes through with a residential project using state density bonus, you will not be able to require or guarantee that you will get a park from that development project. So that is our finding. And we think that if you get some fees from the commercial development side, and they will likely ask for those benefits that you're going to, you would give them with more height and more development potential. We believe that there's a good, a strong possibility that they're going to go that direction. So then you would be able to have that control to acquire property to create parks in this neighborhood.
I see. But if it's a residential development, we can't charge them a fee either, right? I mean, so we can't really do anything with those. So it's almost like that's over there. And, you know, I'm interested in making sure the commercial developments are not mono-use, have the mixed-use components that we're interested in. That's my hesitation. So you're, what do we give up? If we now just say we want the check, the $20, you know, like what do we expect the developments to then be like if they're not selecting from this menu of other public benefit? Like what do we lose at that point?
Well, I think that if you write in the plan, and we have actually, I think, designed a plan here that gets to what you're talking about. We talked about PDR, remember the production, distribution, and retail uses that are very important, and respecting the industrial and business fabric that we have in the district now. So we have built that into the ground floor. And even on some of the upper second floors, I think you can do some of this like artisan workspace and sort of light industrial workspace on second floors. So we have built those standards into this plan. So if you have a good plan, you can regulate that. The good news is, on the commercial side, you can do what, you know, regulate it the way you want. You can create the character and protect some of the things that you want to protect out there and encourage and incentivize those things.
And we're still doing that, right?
Yeah, there's no change there. And we've shown you those plans. You seem to all, there was general consensus that you liked the ideas in the plan that we presented previously.
Okay, okay. And then, and the mixed-use district, can we insist on commercial uses, whether it's retail or something else on the first floor? Or is the fact that we call it mixed-use means it's housing, and they can do what they want if it's housing?
Well, I'm going to go ahead and try that answer, and then perhaps our city attorney can add color to it. What we're finding is that, and this is not tested a whole bunch in the state yet, but what we have found with state density bonus, and there's other housing laws that would prevent cities from requiring retail and commercial development on ground floor.
But are there things we can do, you know, like maybe not, you know, maybe save some of that height, but then, you know, grant that? Are there things we can bargain to get what we want here, or otherwise incentivize what we want by way of first-floor activation?
Yes. So we will be talking about that as part of the objective design standards if we have enough time to get to that this evening. We do have some slides where we talk about some ideas on how to incentivize it. The council does have the authority to make those incentives available to development, and we think that they would be effective. And we've talked to developers. We think that they have some ideas about activating the ground floor as well in their own developments for the people that'll be living there. So that would be a separate discussion, but the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you, Al, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm going to jump in here. I typically wait, but I'll stay because I want to follow up on a line of questioning that John had. For the parks and using this $20 fee to then go purchase land, where would we buy that land in the northeast area? Because the housing is probably developed by one certain entity on the side. Then the MU NE 90 is going to be developed by another. And then the commercial stuff is turning over to very large commercial developers. So I don't, as, you know, John was saying, it feels to me like the only way to get a park down there is to incent someone to build it. How do we, you know, how do we find that land? Because we don't want to build this huge, this beautiful new neighborhood and not have any green and open space.
And so there's, I guess I have two thoughts on that. One is that a developer who's going to do a big housing project, the people in that development, and in order for that developer to get a very good return on their investment, they would need to provide something that is, you know, that attracts people in that, you know, people want to enjoy that open space and the green space and the plazas and the activated, you know, areas for people together. So it's in their best interest to build a project that has some of those amenities. However, it may not be what others in the community or even the council wants it to be, meaning a big green park where you can play soccer, or you can play, you know, things like that, a big green space, a traditional city park, right, that we have. So you're, it's, what we're thinking is that it's very unlikely that you're going to see that from a development, although with a big 10-acre-plus parcel, there's more likelihood of that. So that's the first kind of big-picture thing. The second, where are we going to find that, you know, right piece of property to acquire? And we can look at that. And as part of this plan, we've really looked at the streets. We've looked at the parcels. We've walked the area. The people who are working on this, and even you and our planning commission and everybody else is pretty familiar with the fabric and the details of that area. And so what we have been able to do is look at, well, where would a good place for a park be? If you were to realize this plan and build it out, where would be a good place for a park, knowing the residential is over here and commercial is over here? And so you can do that. You can say, well, we think that it should be generally in these areas, right? You wouldn't want to put a park right in the middle of a commercial industrial zone, right? I mean, you maybe, and I guess people have done it. But in this case, you have, you know, thousands of housing units. You want it closer to the residence. So we can look at that, and I think we've talked about that a little bit in our policies, in the draft policies, in the plan. Where are the locations in this area that it would be best to put a park?
Okay, but that only leaves then GW Williams and Delta Star. And I don't, Delta Star is not going to turn over. GW Williams are kind of at their mercy if they want to put in a park or not, and that's it. So what?
Well, it's also like the corner across the street from the residential, you may be able to get a developer to trade, you know, or do some, you know, a negotiated deal on a park, depending on what community benefits or incentives that you can negotiate, right? So it may be that it's not on the GW Williams site, but maybe it's across the street. Again, this is, you know, kind of speculative at this point, yeah. And there's all the residential along Taylor as well, right? It's not just the GW Williams site. It's probably another, you know, 10-plus acres at least on the other side of the street as well that's mixed-use, or multifamily, rather.
Okay, all right. I'm going to yield my time. Vice Mayor, you are next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to go back on community benefits, just one last question. So if you're a new development, the $20 fee, I understand. But what if you're existing a development and you want to add to your space? How does that $20 fee impact that business?
The community benefits fee really applies generally to new development, I think was contemplated as, you know, brand-new buildings. But I guess in theory, it is possible that addition could occur. And so that fee would only be applied to the height that is above the base height and/or the bonus floor area, meaning the floor area that exceeds the base floor area.
All right. And then in terms of the below-market-rate housing, what are the height standards and then with density and without density bonuses?
So the height standards that we've proposed in the plan for the two mixed-use blocks, MU NE 90, it's a height of max height of 90 feet. And then at the MU NE 75, it's a max height of 75 feet. They're not eligible for community benefits, like bonus programs. So they're at the will of the state density bonus law, where they can request height exceedances. I don't think there's a mandate, a height limit through the density bonus up, but there is a height limit through the FAA at 155.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Leighton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of questions, I guess, in terms, so I can get a visual for it. The park that staff thinks council's giving them directions on, what size park are you envisioning it? Or are you thinking we're giving you direction on? That may help me understand the argument a little bit better.
Yeah, I think that's a good question for the council. We've proposed a ratio of 15% for sites greater than an acre. So if that were applied to the full GW Williams block, that's about a two-acre amenity. So we look to the council to provide the direction if that number should be dialed up.
Okay. And then I guess in those regards, we've talked a little bit, or we put a little bit in the plan for like the Alexandria complex and that area for, the best way I can describe it is like an open-space office park, right? That's open to the public, that has amenities and things like that. Are we, I would assume, we're continuing with that plan and our design as it moves more east, or I guess more north than that is? Is that similar, the same thing, so?
Yes, there's still, that ratio still would apply to the non-residential sites and would still be required to be publicly accessible. With that said, though, the look and feel might be different, where it could be more of that plaza feel that we saw on that scale of open space, rather than the recreational, like park-feeling open space.
Got it. Okay. And then have, along those same lines then, are you envisioning with those, in like a more urban setting, they're kind of like parklets or smaller parks or things like that? Is that part of the vision process that you would think that would fit into that category that we're discussing on kind of the plaza feel, things like that?
I don't know that we've identified like smaller pocket parts in the district, not to say that those are prohibited. We've programmed in the draft plan that multi-use path along Belmont Creek that was shown in the previous slide. And then the other form of open space are the paseos that are essentially cut-throughs that serve as a shared ped and bike path.
And then last question is just, so obviously $20 today is not worth $20 20 years from now in a plan, so how do you, how do we scale that in regards to the fee? Or what are we going to do to make sure that we're getting the same value?
I think if we were to approach a fee option, one implementation item as a result of the plan is adopting that fee, whether that's doing a new study to, and then building in an escalator every year to account for increase in cost.
Okay. Thanks, Neil. Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for your presentation. I had a couple of questions. So I guess on the 20, if we were to go back and look at the $20 fee, that also gives us flexibility if, for example, we couldn't find versus, you know, I think one of the things that council member Dugan talked about was trying to have some sort of community benefits within that area. We could take that funding and let's say improve L'Oriola Park, you know, near, sort of the closest park nearby, maybe expand it, whatever the case may be. So if we had, took the $20 per, you know, per square foot option, then that's, that gives us more flexibility. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's correct. Collecting that fee does allow that added flexibility to spend those funds for priorities that the council decides, which could be improving on or expanding L'Oriola Park, for example.
And then on the, I want to jump onto the non-conforming piece. So, you know, you have, we have sort of a six month, and then you offered some different options on that. But what I didn't see was, was a, you know, you want to shift from a CUP to a minor use permit, but is there sort of a timeframe? Like, I mean, if we really want to get to the conforming uses, and I get, like, you want to give a little more flexibility, but, you know, we say, okay, six months, and then you can do this minor use permit, but are we really just sort of eliminating the ability to get to conforming uses? I mean, is there a timeframe that says, okay, six months here, and then you have a year to do this minor use permit? Otherwise, it all becomes, you have to do a conforming business?
Yeah, right now, the code does allow that additional six months from the point at which it vacates, a non-conform use vacates before it needs to be replaced with a permitted use. So one of the policy considerations that we've outlined is we could look at expanding that, increasing that to more than six months, recognizing that we are creating a situation where there are more non-conforming uses in the district. So yeah, that's something we'd consider is extending that timeframe.
But I guess my question to Randell is, you know, when you talked about extending it, but there, I don't know that there's a, I didn't see a recommendation on how long to extend that, what was reasonable, and also if we were to, I think there's an option to extend it through a minor use permit, but, I mean, we could, you know, we could never get to conforming, if I understand that correctly, versus having some time limit that says, sure, you can do it with a minor use permit, we have to do it within a year or something. Is that, I don't, I don't see that where we're actually sort of moving in that right direction.
Yes, council member. Another option would be to have an amortization period, like where you phase out the relaxed regulatory standards for non-conforming. Like you say, a period in that, we've done that in other cities where you, you know, if it's an impact on the business owner, property owner, you give them time to acclimate to the new regulations. So you could say, okay, we're going to do this for three years, and then in, you know, for the two after that, it gets a little more difficult. Or you could just say, in five years, it ends, right? So you could just say, we're going back to what our old code was, and for five years you get grandfathered in or amortized over. So that's very common for zoning when you, when you do significant changes. So that's an added thing that you could think about.
Okay. That's helpful, Al, because I do think we want to move in the right direction, but, and I want to be flexible to the businesses as well, but I think that might be a good kind of middle ground. So thank you for that.
Okay.
And then my last question was on the, and I guess it's just sort of related to the request on GW Williams. So, I mean, if I were a developer, I'd ask for as much as I could as well. So do we have any data on why they feel they need 200 feet to pencil out? I mean, have we talked to other housing developers? I mean, they're typically not a housing developer, so I mean, have we talked to, I mean, Summerhill was able to pencil out a project, you know, a pretty significant project on El Camino, but it's not, didn't need 200 feet. So do we have any data on why they specifically feel they need that?
Well, I believe the-
I'm asking for hard data, Al, too, not just, either they, they think that's what it is.
Perhaps we will hear from the developer this evening or the property owner this evening to explain their position on that. But I can tell you that what we heard in our discussion with GW Williams is, we can't build this today. Very clearly, hey, that we can't make this pencil today. And in talking to various developers, people or developers who have done business in San Carlos, are doing business in San Carlos, in the Bay Area, in California, in the last few months, I've talked to a good number of developers and I've listened to some of the most prolific developers in the state of California in the last month or two. And so the market conditions today in the state of California, it's not just the Bay Area, but in the state of California, are not conducive to high density residential development, period. That's it. Equity is not being lent. They can't, the people who are lending can't make their return on investments, so they're not lending the money to the developers. Construction costs or material costs are very high, labor costs are high, there's uncertainty with some of the things that are coming through the federal government that is making the labor market uncertain. So there's a number of different things that are having an impact on high density market rate housing in the state of California. However, this is an aspirational 20-year plan. If you put these regulations into place with your vision, it will happen. I've seen it, it will happen, the market will change, it's already beginning to change. These developers that are doing business in our community and want to do business in our community are looking two to five years out, and they're starting their plans now. So they see changes, they are have, there's some optimism and there's some change happening today. They're, they're presenting plans to us, they're talking to us about the next two to five years. So there will be a change. Is the developer right that they can't do 100 feet or 150 feet? Yeah, I would agree. It's not going to happen today. But it will happen if you, if you put this plan forward that you want to do.
Thank you, Al. That's helpful. That's all the questions I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Al, I have one, one final question to you, and then maybe we'll open it up to public comment. I noticed, this is also with the non-conforming use, Adam reminded me, there's a note that says that we prohibit, prohibit the reestablishment of a non-conforming use only when the entire building or site has been abandoned rather than based on the vacancy of individual tenant spaces. So I understand, you know, one or two tenants turnover, you don't want it to be, you know, to trigger that. But what if you have a 50 tenant building and you have one lone tenant who is like the last holdout, and so that's not the entire building? Have you considered like a percentage for turnover? Is that something, you know, that we should think about?
We didn't, but that's a pretty good idea. So that makes sense. I think you're right. Getting down to a lower, like something more reasonable, like 10, 15% of occupancy, right? Because if you do have 20 or 30 spaces, right, and you get down to that point, something's got to change. So I think that's a pretty good idea. Yeah.
All right. Thanks, Al. John, did you have another last question? Okay. And then we're going to do public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, just a quick one. I think it is for Al. And on non-conforming uses, I agree with council member Rack that, you know, we want to see this plan come to fruition. I appreciate your optimism on how, hey, it's business cycles, and if you plan it, they will come. I appreciate that. And we're doing good work here, and this should be a, an exciting new chapter for this part of our city. That said, going into this, our intent was to get out in front of the major developments coming in. We had life science coming in, it was going to be very, you know, they were coming in in the same way they were coming into the east side under the Vision Plan, but we didn't have the Vision Plan over there, we didn't have any planning, and we wanted to do things a bit different to balance the housing and get a new district. So I always had the mentality that we really weren't interested in disrupting existing uses. Obviously, it's a balance because we do want the district to move over, but we know there's this preponderance of, of, you know, life science and other major developers that do want to come to San Carlos. So I guess my question is, are we comfortable that these changes you're proposing to the non-conforming use will generally allow the existing businesses to, you know, operate their businesses and continue to function over there without undue disruption from this plan?
Yes, I believe so. And there are a lot of industrial uses that are similar to what's there because we designed it that way, listening to you. You wanted to preserve the, the character that's out there and the business that's, that's going on there. So we, we built that into the plan, the draft plan, so that a lot of those uses you could do. There may be some. In the commercial area, actually, it's pretty, it's pretty market driven, to be quite frank. It's there because there's not residential there, right? And so there's not going to be a lot of issue with the uses. In fact, we've talked to a lot of the businesses over there about, in the Harbor Industrial Association, we've made several presentations to a lot of the property owners and business owners. So they're much more concerned about residential than what, what we have planned for land use there. So it should be pretty good in terms of kind of the ecosystem.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Al. Good work on all this.
Okay. I think we'll move to public comment now. I don't see any council member questions currently, so if you're joining us on Zoom, now is the time to raise your hand. We will leave the raise hand feature open for the next minute or so. So please make sure that you raise your hand now, and then you will wait your turn. Again, we'll be closing that feature in just a moment, but we will go ahead and start with public comment in the room. Please, Crystal.
Okay. I have four slips for in person. First up is Lori Berger, and then you'll be followed by Sean Williams.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Lori Berger. I'm an attorney at Silicon Valley Law Group, and we represent 495 Brigato, who is the owner of 268 Industrial, and we also represent Honda San Carlos, who operates on that property. So I just want to reiterate my concerns that were raised in my letter of August 5th and at previous meetings. The primary concern is the, one of the paseos that was mentioned earlier. It's on, in section 5.21 of the plan, it runs from Brigato to Industrial Road, and the current version has a 26-foot wide paseo with five feet, a five-foot setback on either side, so 36 feet for the whole thing, which is really incompatible with the existing buildings and structures that are there, both on Honda's property and next door. So that's a concern. And another, other than the fact that there's buildings there, there is an ongoing contamination issue where our client has just put in a TOSCA cap to cover that area, that any sort of breach of that would require EPA's approval. The other concern that we have is the scope and how the Brigato Road extension north would be implemented. We just would like more information on that. And we appreciate consideration of these concerns as the city moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Sean Williams, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Todd Treckel.
Thank you, city council members and mayor. I'm with GW Williams Company. We do share the vision of adding housing. I think that is the goal. I think that that is a good goal to have. It has to pencil. We're not going to move forward with development that doesn't pencil. I think that's obvious. Some thoughts that I have, how about the 155 feet or higher if the FAA grants it? Whatever's higher. We don't have to agree with the FAA and assume that they'll never relax. Question I have is, how is it fair to have a six-month timeline for lapse of use if the development doesn't pencil for another 20 years? At the May meeting, one of the consultants, Ms. Blazer, she also pointed out, it's at hour 2:58, that even under maximum seven stories the rezoning would allow would not result in profitable development. They did forecasts with the economy, even as strong as 2018, it wasn't going to pencil. So. Anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Rosario, I'm sorry, Todd Treckel, you'll be followed by Rosario Fernandez.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Todd Treckel, and I represent Bay Area Self-Storage, which has operated successfully at 151 Industrial for more than 30 years. Today, our business is classified as a legal non-conforming use. Grandfathering doesn't apply to us or to others in the same situation because we're already non-conforming. This leaves us in a state of limbo, unable to modernize or reinvest without taking or without risking our rights. This outcome doesn't serve the city or us. It discourages upgrades and ultimately prevents reinvestment in this district. The solution is straightforward. Make self-storage an allowable use with a conditional use permit, or expand the grandfathering clause to include legal non-conforming uses such as ours. This approach gives the city full oversight of future projects while giving us a fair path to reinvest. It would also allow us to develop a modern multi-story facility that uses land more efficiently and delivers higher quality design. We also have serious concerns about the proposed 30-foot setback from Belmont Creek. On our parcel, that setback sterilizes nearly 15,000 square feet of usable land. Stripping away that much property without compensation could create real financial hardship and undermines future development opportunities for exactly the kinds of projects the city says it wants to see. We respectfully urge you to adopt a CUP framework for self-storage and to reconsider rigid setbacks so we can move forward in a way that protects the creek, achieves city goals, and allows longstanding businesses to reinvest in San Carlos. And while I have 20 seconds, the parking ratios that are being proposed, there's a maximum parking allocation. I think you need to let the market decide what makes sense. We developers are cheap. We don't want to build a single stall more than what we have to because it's so expensive, so let the market dictate. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosario Fernandez, you have the next, and you'll be followed by Sam Hertzberg.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council, Al and Randell. Thank you for the presentation. I want to give you a compliment, first of all. I received two beautiful letters to remind me to come to the meeting, so I commend of that. And the reason I'm saying this is because the previous agenda, they, people don't answer, they don't come, and, you know, they need to give their voice. I'm here to support the project. I hope to be here. Hope it doesn't take 20 years to do this. It's a beautiful area. I live three blocks away from there. I lived before in San Carlos, 44 years up in the hills, and I never thought Oracle was going to be built. I never thought Saturday Hill was going to be built, so the density doesn't bother me. The traffic, yes. I'm concerned about the traffic on Old County Road, so I hope this will take consideration about the issue coming from the south to the north. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sam Hertzberg, you're up next, followed by Mark Lockenmeyer.
Thank you, city council members. Appreciate the opportunity to talk and the very thoughtful discussion that's taking place. Just a couple of points to make. Small parklets don't meet the same need as, as a large park, particularly as you're adding a new neighborhood, and there already is a deficit of green space on the east side. The park master plan for the city doesn't address growth on the east side, and that's another outstanding, just making sure not just one plan is being amended, but it also is consistent with an overall strategy for parks in San Carlos. Three is the need to consider development in areas to contribute. So I think you're having that discussion about commercial development, and I think, you know, I understand the constraints with residential development, so appreciate that it's not one single- that it's not one single developer. It's, it's a whole area that's contributing towards the overall goal. And I just wanted to speak in, in support of creekside buffers. It's important to have a flood plain. Belmont Creek is, has a history of flooding and needs space to meander and not just be a straight concrete line ditch. So I think your vision in the Northeast Plan is just very similar to the Alexandria development. It's the right approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Lockenmeyer, you're up next, and then you'll be followed by Ben Fuller.
Hi, I'm Mark Lockenmeyer, the HIA. Just want to talk about, a little bit about the grandfathering clause. We have a lot of property owners that were owner-users, not professional landlords. Their buildings will never be really sold to a professional landlord unless there's some kind of assemblage. So six months may not be enough time. If there's a pandemic, the building goes vacant. There's an earthquake, the building goes vacant. There's a fire, the building goes vacant. There's a flood, the building goes vacant for more than six months. Then they may lose their use. Okay? Sometimes people die, close a business, goes through a process, maybe more than six months before they can sell it or find a tenant. Again, problematic. These buildings are old. They need to be retrofitted sometimes. These aren't professional landlords. So the grandfather clause, I think, has to be really looked at, especially for the small property owner. Thank you.
It's great to see everybody. I want to first say that this is a great process you guys are engaging in. I happened to talk to John Dugan a while ago, and he mentioned the vision of this. And it's really exciting that you guys are doing this. And I want to kind of point back to a little bit of San Carlos history. Not all of you have been here this whole time. I remember Randy Royce saying, yeah, that's a really good opportunity to buy that Firewood lot. Well, guess who bought that lot? You did. I also remember everyone saying, yeah, let's go get that heating building and next to Loryella Park. That's a really good opportunity. Guess what? We missed out. Somehow the school got it. We keep missing these opportunities. And that's why I'm so excited that John approached me last year, and he wants to work with all you guys to do something really forward-thinking. I think you guys are changing. And this is a council like I've never really seen before. I mean, you guys have really learned the lessons of our neighborhood. You're listening. We are so appreciative. And I want to kind of bring up one little thing as well. Sean, if you guys build the park, I've gone, I walked around Panth a bunch of times, and they've got these security guys that chase you around. And during COVID, I used to ride my bike and kind of outrun these guys. The, the original idea of that park, that, that area at Panth was it was going to be accessible to the public. And they said, yeah, we have 377 trees and you can go in there. But it turns out you really can't. And so I love the vision you guys have to do something that is for the city, but is also available for Sean and all his guys. And I just, I really want to encourage you all. You're doing a great job. I know this is really difficult. So keep it up and thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Any other public speakers in person tonight, Crystal?
That was my last one.
Okay. So we will close the raise hand feature, and we will start with our Zoom callers.
And we have five hands up on Zoom. I'm going to lower your hand, and I'll grant permission to unmute. First up, we have Rick LaFranchi, and then you'll be followed by Jennifer Rossi.
Yes. Thanks, everyone. And this has been very productive and appreciate everyone involved in the process for being as communicative as they are. So my name is Rick LaFranchi. I work with the firm Graymark Capital. We are a property owner at the corner of Industrial and Quarry. We're primarily concerned around the, the activation in that area that just is, doesn't comply with what our current use is. We've, over time, this property has a significant amount of capital that's been invested. We've invested a considerable amount of capital. At this point in time, we're also in a commercial real estate recession. Leasing, particularly in the biotech area, has come to practically a stop. So one, one item that came up with respect to nonconforming is extending. And what our request would be, would be to eliminate that, that six-month window to allow for the market to recover and for property owners to lease their prop, their buildings. The second item was the minor use permit. At this point in time, to get a lease done with anybody in the biotech or commercial sector, if you dangle any kind of conditional use permit, minor use permit, they're going to look for another property. They're going to go to another market. That is the death now if you are trying to market space right now. So it really wouldn't work. Option number three, force only the, the vacant buildings to comply. As Mark said before, so many of these buildings are single-tenant. There's only user buildings. There's a number of larger tenants in this market where if it, if it goes vacant, you know, it's, it's, that's a reality. And there's a number of properties that would go vacant. And so to re-tenant that, or to be forced to comply with new zoning in that amount of window would be hugely detrimental as well. I'm out of time, but we would request to extend or eliminate that six-month window. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Rossi, you're up next, and then you'll be followed by Gia Pham.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for the informative presentation. I just wanted to make a quick comment about the really once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that the city has to add park space and really think outside of the box on how to get the space and not just small parklets putting the space together to create a new park. I know you guys talked about different cities that have done different things. So San Francisco has added parks. Redwood City has added parks. Mountain View has added parks. A lot of cities have added parks as they've developed. So it is definitely doable. I don't know how. This is not my specialty, but I would, again, really encourage city staff and city council to really think about the best way to build a new park in this development to have more green space. Like was mentioned earlier, there's a, there's not a lot of green space on the east side. There's going to be a lot of people there, thousands and thousands of units and commercial. And there's already an existing neighborhood there that doesn't have a park. So I think adding a park would be really important. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Gia Pham, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Brian Heckman.
Good evening, council. My name is Gia, and I'm the communications coordinator with Housing Choices. For more than 25 years, our organization has supported people with developmental disabilities by advocating for affordable and accessible housing and helping these individuals live independently in their communities. I'd like to first thank Councilmember Dugan for his comments tonight and in all the past meetings about creating a really vibrant mixed-use development that includes both affordable housing and community activities. As you consider this Northeast area plan, please ensure that new housing developments include units at extremely low and very low income levels for people with developmental disabilities such as autism. This community often relies on fixed income, like SSI, which is only about $1,000 a month, which makes other housing really out of reach unless the rents are at that 30% AMI. And San Carlos's own housing element reflects this need as well. There is an increase in the population of those with developmental disabilities by 30%, while the general population hasn't grew that significantly. And most of the people with ADD are adults and are still living at home or worse homelessness or institutions. So we really want to be planning for like inclusive housing opportunities for this community and not have them left out. So if you can consider density that is appropriate to get these very low-income units, that would be great to help the project like pencil out and move forward because it sounds like a very great plan, and we like to see it through.
Thank you, Gia. Then we'll have Brian Heckman. You're up next. And then you'll be followed by Daniel Zizmore. And he's our last speaker on Zoom.
Oh, great. Yeah, Brian Heckman with Graymark Capital. Sorry, I didn't realize Rick LaFranchi took some time for us, but just wanted to add for our building at 150 Industrial. You know, we're concerned that, you know, that what wants to get done there for retail makes sense if, if we were to kind of demolish the building and rebuild with the existing way that our building is with the current parking ratio, that the retail doesn't make sense or conform in that space. So we're hopeful that the city council will look at, you know, grandfathering or nonconforming use in a way that allows us to maintain the investment in our building. Thanks.
Thank you. And then, so our last speaker on Zoom is Daniel Zizmore.
Thank you. Just want to echo what some of my neighbors, I think, said as well, which is, you know, from, from our perspective, I, it sounds like the, the neighborhood is trying to be pretty flexible and, and in what the future will look like. And we're excited to see what it becomes. But a big part of that is to have space for all the new people that are coming in. I think that much is clear. And, and as Jennifer said, you know, it's not just the more than 1,000 residents that will move in, but hopefully folks who work there can take advantage of the fact that, hey, there's, there's a park here, and we can have lunch here or spend time here as well. So, you know, there's more benefits than just to the people who live here. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Daniel, and thank you to everyone who submitted comments this evening. We appreciate your time in person. I did want to take this opportunity to try and address a few of the issues that were raised tonight. Al, do you have a response to the Honda San Carlos letter that we received?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So we understand the concern of Honda and, and other property owners where we have these ideas about mobility, how to be, allow people to get around throughout the whole district. And we have examples in our community where developments have, when they redevelop, not today. So we're not asking Honda to do this today. We're not asking for Honda or other property owners to, you know, put an easement on their property today. But if, if a project redevelops completely, then yes, we, we are looking for mobility throughout this, the area as a framework. And some quick examples, here at City Hall, we have a Paseo that runs through the Pacific hacienda development and into downtown. And that was part of the development project. We have another on Walnut where you can get from Walnut through to the Bank of America area in a new condo development. Same thing. We required that. Alexandria, even though that was a negotiated deal, that we have a Paseo all the way through the development project. So there's lots of examples in our own community where, when you have a big redevelopment or the site completely redevelops, that it's reasonable to ask for these things to make it better and conform to the fabric of the community. And so that's what we're asking here. And we, we think that it's a reasonable thing to ask for the future when the project or the property redevelops in its entirety. And it wouldn't be all on one property. It would be shared. For instance, like the road, the, near Brigato was brought up, and that would be, one half would be one property owner and one half would be the other property owner next to it. So it's a shared responsibility, not just for Honda.
Okay. Thank you. And then one other question I wanted to ask about the nonconforming uses that was brought up tonight in the comments were, you know, acts of God, a pandemic, a flood, a fire, an earthquake, a death. How, how does that timeframe of, you know, being vacant encompass those circumstances?
Well, Mr. Lockenmeyer brings up a good point. He's a commercial broker. He deals in this quite a bit more than, than we do. And so I would take that into account. And like I think we talked about, it isn't perhaps considering an amortization period and giving more time. But at some point, you do want to see change, I think, if you adopt, and we've spent all this time and effort on this plan. If you want to see change, then, you know, at some point, you have to go the other direction.
Okay. Thanks. I'll, I'll open it up to council comments or additional questions now that we've heard public comment.
Madam Mayor, can I just ask a clarifying question? I mean, staff is asking us for direction on these five questions. So are you asking us to address those five questions?
Oh, you're right. I had to try and stay on track. Thank you. Yes. Crystal, could you bring up the policy questions slide? And maybe we could go, that's slide 29. Thank you. Should we go?
Mayor, if I may add, before you move on, I was just informed by one of our staff members that we do have something in the current nonconforming code for an act of God. It's called, you know, some disaster. So there is relief in our existing code. Thank you.
Good to know. Thank you. Thanks for looking that up. So what is the will of the council? Should we go one by one and, and do a straw poll of what we support? Would that keep us on track best? Yes, I see nodding heads. Okay. So we'll start with number one. I'll take comments on number one.
Is one and two kind of maybe lumped together? Because I'm sure one, my one will spill into two, if it matters.
If you would like to add one and two together, that's, if that's your will, Neil, go ahead. Would you like to start?
I'll start then. So I think overall, part of what I always think is the most important thing is change. The pace of change is just as important as change itself. The concern I have about adding density is, as the chart showed, would be massive amounts of density that could be increased to that area, which I think would tip the scales in a lot of the other planning we're doing, similar to things we're talking about, slow streets, similar to things we're talking about in how you would manage parking and all those things. To have 3,300 units potentially be built to that maximum by adding density, I think, would increase the pace beyond I'm comfortable with as a council member to do that. I'm fine supporting the additional height to both areas, to the 155. I think my original point was, I didn't think, I felt if one building was going to be 155, and that was kind of where people wanted to go, then it should be allowed for industrial as well. Because I think this council is pretty clear that what is currently there, we want to maintain there. Especially me personally, I believe that manufacturing is going to be important, especially the manufacturing that's there going forward. So I'm comfortable with the increase of height for one and two. I would not support adding more density than we've already discussed.
Okay. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And maybe just a quick question on this. Either of these limits, like, for example, if we approved the height to 155 and we didn't increase the density, but yet we, but yet a developer wanted to do something more ambitious and it made sense, we could still do a planned development and have a negotiated development agreement on any of these properties. Is that right?
Yes. So through the mayor, I think to answer the question, the only path to go beyond the base density would be through state density bonus law. And my understanding is not through, not through a planned development for residential. So to increase density, they would utilize state density bonus law.
Well, they certainly could. But I, I mean, if it's mixed use or if it's the Delta Star site, we're, we're in the realm of commercial as well, I suppose. So I think we're, I mean, we always have the option to do planned development. I guess that's the point I'm, I'm trying to make. I'm assuming that, that's, that's true, right?
Yeah, I think I'll answer in two ways. First, commercial projects, if they wanted to exceed their base FAR, they have two paths, really. The community benefits option and then the planned development. But for specifically for density, units per acre, the path to exceed that would be through density bonus law, not necessarily through a planned development, although they could do one, but that's not a necessary tool.
I see. Because by density, we're, we're not talking flurry or ratio commercial. You're talking- talking in units per acre. Got you. Okay.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, makes sense. So, yeah, I concur with Neil that I support the increase in height in both sites. If it really will take something greater than that to pencil or it otherwise makes sense, or more density becomes something that all sides want, I'm open to further negotiation and discussion on that. But I think setting the specific plan parameters, I agree with increasing height and leaving the density where it's at. And just also point out, we want to get this plan done. You know, we've had a moratorium running for a long time, and increasing the density, as I understand it, kicks off another, you know, significant revision to the transportation plan and the EIR. So and a $300,000 consulting fee that I don't think any of us want to spend. So I think the height limit, but not touching density makes the most sense.
Okay, thanks, John. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would love to get, I would want to get clarification first on John's question about the specific plan and negotiating a planned development, because I feel like, what is the purpose of a specific plan if we are already, if we're just going to one off and take one off projects and do planned developments? Isn't the purpose to just make it as simple as possible and it sort of the developer knows what their what all the rules are?
Yes, and the market would much prefer not doing a planned development permit or a development agreement. So what we would recommend is that you build a plan that you really want and make it very clear, and you can still get community benefits through what you build into the plan. You're saying you get this much height, you want more, and nine times out of 10, maybe not that, but a very high percentage of those developers will ask for that. We've seen that already. And so that triggers, you know, the community benefits that you put in the plan. You tell them upfront what you want. You come up with a list, just like the council did for the East Side Innovation District. You came up with a matrix. So you're you prioritize what the council and the community wants for community benefits, and it's in the plan. If they do it, they get they can go through the permit process. So that would be the way that we would recommend the plan so that it streamlines the process. As you've heard tonight, time is money, and and they'll always tell you that.
Thank you, Al. And can you just tell me, does someone know what the, I may have missed it in the doc in the report, what the FAA height limit is for that site and where GW Williams is?
Yes, the limit is 155 feet.
Okay. So I guess that helps me very much. Thank you. So I would say for the, I mean, I guess I'm, in general, I feel like we, I'm not supportive necessarily of the density or the height increases for to that level for the GW Williams, because I think what we're doing by doing that is we're giving away the potential to get extra and more more deeper affordable housing. So we are basically throwing that away because they can't use density to go up there and there's going to run out of space. So I would, by keeping the, let them get more deeper, we can get a 50% bonus, but that means we get better affordability. So I would rather keep it at what it is, let them use the density bonus, and they'll end up getting closer to that 155 anyway, because that's the max they can get to. And, you know, I'd rather incentivize the developer to do more deeper affordable housing, just like GFM, the public speaker, talked about the need for that kind of housing, which we don't have in our community. That is one of the areas that we are totally lacking in in San Carlos. So I think incentivizing the developer do that is a better approach. I think, you know, if we wanted to go slightly higher, I could think about that, but I don't want to go to the 155. And I think with Delta Star, similarly, I don't want to go to the 155, but because we are transitioning from another from the community, from the area of housing, and I would prefer to do, you know, if it's 115 or something like that or 120, that gives them a little more flexibility, I'd be okay with that.
Okay, thank you. Adam, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to agree with Councilmember Barack. I think if we give them the maximum 155, there's no room for negotiation. And I too would like to see a more affordable housing. I also think if we would go the maximum down city, that we're talking about schools and kids and adding way more than our city can do right now. And I worry about the children and walking to school and the schools impact and all this. So I'm okay with lowering the height to maybe 120 or and then having room to negotiate.
Yeah, I kind of, I'm falling on the area of Councilmember Rack as well, because I do think that we need some transition between commercial and residential. So I think staff already put a lot of thought into that transition, and it's based on what we've heard from the East Side, and we can assume those new neighbors would probably want some transition between commercial and residential as well. So and I agree with the no density either. I mean, we want, if they want to, you know, we want to get as much affordable housing out of these projects as we can for for the multifamily, and they can use the state density bonus, and then they can get a waiver for height, right? They can, yeah. So it's going to, you know, at least we're getting more affordable housing than going down that road. So I guess I would be okay with keeping it as is, but I guess I'm open if, you know, if we want to look at 120, I don't know kind of what that, if that's impactful or not.
Madam Mayor, I'm I'm fine with keeping as is with, as you mentioned as well. I just threw that out as a, I milked that more for Delta Star because they couldn't take advantage of a density bonus.
Yeah.
Versus, that's why I was trying to be more equitable around giving them something as well, since GW Williams can take advantage of a density bonus on height.
Does staff have some guidance here?
Yes, I think we would agree with that, quite frankly, because it does, they can still get higher buildings, they could double the height almost with state density bonus from what it is being proposed today at 90, and then they would be then required to build the affordable housing that the city needs so badly. Yeah, so we're in that same, and that's what we have proposed.
Well, the question I have, Al, for you, Madam Mayor, if I could, is, I mean, we already require affordable housing, right? 20% for condos, 15% for for rentals. So they're already in the density bonus for the most part. So what are we incentivizing here? That's what I'm wondering. It sounds like we're just going to cost ourselves housing units is what it sounds like to me.
Al, can I just interrupt just because of the time? I just want to remind the council of the time.
Thank you. Greg, could we have a motion to extend the meeting, please? And keep in mind, we have one more large item after this.
I'm motioning to extend the meeting to.
Can you?
Oh, sorry. I motioned to extend the meeting till midnight.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Could you call the roll, please, Crystal? Vice Mayor Venkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Layton?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, picking back up.
So to continue on with your question, they would, the state density bonus law requires deeper levels of affordability than the city, although we do have our own density bonus part of our ordinance. But the state density bonus law would push them into an area where, hey, for this extra height, you have to go deeper in your levels of affordability.
Understood, but if you just look at, Crystal, if you could go to page 13, you know, this is, what is it? Yeah, if, you know, I mean, we already require the 15%. So I think we're at, I think our standard zoning puts people in number two regardless. So it, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think we're incentivizing any real change of behavior, except if they want to change 5% low income to make it all 15% very low income. It would open up the state density bonus. So I'm just, you know, I'm just pointing out, I don't think we're incentivizing any more affordable units. We're incentivizing 5% flipping from low income to very low, and in the meantime, costing ourselves, I don't know, a couple hundred units, right?
Yeah, through the, I think that's correct, is, and I would just emphasize that these are just really preliminary numbers based off of, you know, rough estimations of what the acreage size is and then an optimistic look at the max density and the optimistic look at how much affordability they would be able to achieve, or, excuse me, how much more bonus they could achieve. I think what we've seen as a city, though, and at least in the best performing market, is most projects leaning toward the 15% very low category because the 50% bonus is so attractive, I think, to developers, plus the incentive, plus the concessions and waivers that are allowed through density bonus law.
Got it. And I do commend staff for the good analysis of bonus laws. This is what we've always needed, because we got to have this stuff in front of us. So thank you. But I just point out to my colleagues that what I just heard, the motivation was to incentivize more affordable units. And I just want to point out that we're just incentivizing 5% to go from low income to very low, and in the meantime, giving up a couple hundred units. And maybe if we just don't want taller buildings, that's what we want to do. But I don't think we're incentivizing anything that beneficial to weigh against giving up several hundred units that would otherwise likely get built.
Councilmember Rack, I see you would like to add on to this.
I wanted to add, get a couple. Can you, Al, or just remind me, so what is our current requirement for affordability for for the 15 and 20%? What is the breakout of that between various levels of affordability?
Yeah, so the this slide does show that, at least in part, for number one.
I guess I'm asking sort of what are required, what the city of San Carlos' basic requirement is for affordability. We have a 15% and a 20%.
Yeah, it's it's 5% at the low income and 10% at the very low, assuming it's a rental development. And then it's 20% at low or moderate if it's a four seale development.
Okay. Can I ask, can you tell me how many very low income units were built in the last in the last arena cycle?
Through the mayor, I think we'd have to look that up.
I'm sorry, I don't, I'm just confused. I don't, you're telling me that our our basic requirement requires 10% very low income?
It's a total of 15, where it's 5% of it is at the low, and then 10% is at the very low, but developers have the option of going 15% very low.
Right, to get higher bonus, density bonus.
That's correct.
And they can, okay, all right. I I'm going to go look at that, but I don't. All right, I just think that, John, I think, look, I'm concerned about the height and what we're giving away on that, and I think we should promote and try to incentivize more lower. And I said from the beginning, I think, I didn't mention about more low income, I said deeper affordability. And I think that's what we need to do, because I think if you look at our numbers in the last eight years, we've we've built practically zero very low income units. So that's that's sort of my viewpoint of why we need to do that. And they're already going to get, be able to get themselves to that 155. We might as well get something out of it.
I mean, I appreciate that, but it sounds like you're wanting them to then negotiate with us for more and we get more out of them. But I thought we were doing this to get out of the planned development negotiations and provide a stable plan that they could respond to.
I think that's what we're saying. They have the ability to take, there is, they have the 90 feet and the density, and they have the ability to take advantage of the state density bonus or the city density bonus and build more. That is their prerogative to do that. They can get concessions to do that. They can do all those things. There's no negotiations on it. They have that ability. They can make the decision about what kind of affordability they want to provide, and that they can either take advantage of it or they can take a lower level and not provide. It's up to them to decide.
I appreciate that. Crystal, could you go to page 15? I just, you know, we, and again, if, you know, these are tall buildings, so, you know, we can, I guess I'm more understanding if we're just saying this is too tall and we're uncomfortable. But if we're trying to incentivize housing and meet our housing goals to include affordable, it's clear to me that greater height is going to deliver more units to the general benefit of of San Carlos and serving our housing goals. It delivers the same amount of of affordable units, a slight change in the depth of affordability. But, you know, if we accepted this increase, it would open up, what, almost 400, well, 340 units, 330 units. So just, I just want to make sure we understand what we're doing before we just say we're limiting the developer, because what we're doing is we're limiting housing is what we're doing by that.
I I'm very comfortable with with the position I have, and I don't feel like we're limiting housing, because we are giving them the opportunity to take advantage of the state density bonus to meet the same, very similar numbers.
Could I just ask a clarifying question here? Because I thought that Neil and John, you both said yes to height, but no to additional density. So the additional height would be to make the units larger, but not necessarily add more units and cause all of this extra study, because this impacts traffic and all of the other things that have been studied. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. There is a path to leave the density alone, but increase the height, which, like you said, allows potentially larger units as well as preservation of the ground floor for possibly open space.
And more family-sized units, I believe staff reports said.
It's a lot of height, and especially if you give this height as a base, though, and then they go and do state density bonus on top of 155 feet, then you're looking at a really tall building. I mean, what are we looking at? How many stories if we do 155 plus state density bonus?
Yeah, through the mayor, I would just clarify that the FAA limit itself is 155. So it's unlikely that it could go beyond that, but that's correct. State density bonus law could go up to that 155.
So we could get there regardless, right? We could get to that 155 regardless.
I haven't lived and breathed this to the level. If, Al, if your staff's recommending your preferred approach is what Adam and is proposing, then, you know, is that right, Al? That's what you think is most appropriate here?
Yeah, and and like you said earlier, he gets us done with this plan sooner and at less cost. So we think that this development, the way it's proposed and with some of these adjustments, that if somebody really wanted to do it, they would, they would be able to do a development when the conditions are right. So, yes, we we're very comfortable with what is being proposed, yeah, and the discussion of the of the rest of the council.
And is it true they can get up to the FAA height limit with the bonus, even if we don't increase it from what is existing 120? Is that 90?
Yeah. That's my understanding. Is that, Giti? Is that, yeah? Do you want to say anything?
Councilmember Dugan, good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. Yes, so 90 feet is the height limit that we have proposed right now for the GW Williams side. If they were to really maximize the density bonus, they could double the height, for all you know. We don't have the envelope for them to double. We can't go 180. It'll cap itself at 155. So they can achieve 155. They'll make, like you said, with the DU per acre that we prescribe, they'll probably build larger units. And like Randall was saying, they will probably try to maximize the envelope and leave more space on the ground for maybe open spaces. So, yes, they can maximize that envelope.
And so state density bonus allows for the increase in height, not just number of units?
Exactly, yes. It does let them go double the height if they want to. But right now, there isn't the envelope for them to double, because they'll max out though. there isn't the envelope for them to double, because they'll max out, though.
Double the height? I mean, add 50% to the height, right? Or?
They could, but as, they could, as per design, they could come back and propose a taller building, which almost could amount to doubling the height. They could come back with a design, design proposal that shows you that we, to achieve, to achieve all of the kind of units, units that my density bonus is allowing me, I am requiring the building to go taller. So, they're asking for, is it a concession or waiver? Yeah, they're asking for a waiver concession to let them go taller, to be able to really avail the density bonus. So, they could come back with double the height, but this envelope does not allow them. So, they'll max out at 155.
I see. Okay. Okay, thank you. That helps.
So, do we have consensus from the council that, number one, and number two, number one, for the GW Williams site, the MU 90 block, does the council support increasing the maximum building height, the maximum density, or both? We're going to say neither. We don't support changing anything. And number two, for the Delta Star site, does the council support increasing the maximum bonus height to 155? It sounded like there were two votes in favor with John and Neil. I'm going to say no. And I think Adam and Pranita were, Pranita's a no. Adam?
I'm okay with going a little higher. I didn't want to go to 155. So, if there's, if it's, you know, if it's, if that is helpful for that, great. And if not, I think we stay at what it is.
Well, I just, I'm sorry.
155 gets them versus 120. That's all.
If I could, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
The, I think how we got on all of this to begin with was our observation at the last meeting that I think don't, isn't the PI district that surrounds these two at 120? And isn't that what we prompted our discussion was, why is housing going to be shorter than the surrounding zones? So, where are we at on the other zones here by way of height?
Crystal, could you go to slide 17, please?
So, for, for the PI district, 100, the one with where you have the hatch, you have 100 as the base height. And with the bonus height, they can avail 155 feet, except for the Delta Star site, where the base is 75 feet, and you can add 25 more feet to get to 100 feet in a bonus situation.
I see. And by bonus, we're not talking about state density bonus. This is commercial.
That's a commercial parcel, yeah.
And this is our, this is what we're coming up with by way of a scoring system and public benefit?
Exactly. You'll get community benefits for that additional 25 feet on the Delta Star site.
So, are we comfortable that by not increasing the height for GW Williams or the Delta Star sites, they can still have the same height as what we're going to allow in these other zones? I'm just comfortable, I'm uncomfortable why we're limiting our two biggest operators over there if we're going to allow these other heights elsewhere. That's what I'm, that's how we got on this topic to begin with.
Yeah, right. Councilmember, the idea was that the site closest to the residential parcels would look to transition. But you're right, yeah, they are getting limited, and their neighbors haven't been limited to that height.
But, I mean, we are providing the stepping in the all residential to the south of that, right?
That's right.
So, that's where I thought we were handling the stepping. Okay. I guess for my money, I would just want to put all that at the same height and treat everyone fairly. I'm not sure why we're coming down on the housing and coming down on, on our biggest industrial employer in town. So, I would propose, we just put 155 on everything. That's what I would propose.
Councilmember Rack, I see your hand.
I'm not, I'm, I'm comfortable giving a little more flexibility to Delta Star, just because they can't take advantage of something like the density bonus and get the height. So, but, you know, I don't, I don't know that 155 is, and we do want to have some stepping, so I don't, I mean, I would go to, could say, could we go to 125? Would John, you and Neil be okay with something like that, instead of 100 for them?
Sorry, but then we still have, I mean, we don't, we have no idea how tall the GW Williams thing will be. It might be 90. It's
And it might be 155.
It might be 155, right. And we don't know how tall the housing next door will be either.
Correct.
It's a lot of unknowns.
I mean, I, so I want, right, and the housing on the, I think that one is at 75. They could be at 125, if they take density bonus or something. So, I don't know, I mean, I think we're, I'm struggling a little bit with the Delta Star one, because they don't have the ability to take advantage of a height bonus, right, through the state density bonus.
Does staff have an opinion on commercial, on the Delta Store? I, I think we're trying, we're like weighing all of these different scenarios, and we have no, we have no crystal ball, so.
You're right, Madam Mayor. The heights in the surrounding parcels in the GW Williams and south of Taylor, because they are residential parcels, and they would be awailing the state density bonus law, we do not know what will get built. They would, they could maximize at 155 feet, for all you know, for all of that. The Delta Star, that would be the only parcel that will be limited to only the 100 feet with an, they would avail just a 25 feet bonus height. You'll get in lieu community benefits. In that case, they would be the only parcel that would be suppressed at that height, because they're a commercial parcel. They have got nothing to do with state density bonus law. Right, that.
But they can avail, they can avail themselves of our bonus height, but what we're proposing here isn't a max height. It's a max height if they avail themselves of our bonus?
Their base height is 75 feet, and their bonus height lets them get up, get 200 feet. So, that's what, that's what is being debated, and that's what Councilmember Rack is kind of proposing, is should we give them a little bit more leeway to come up to 125 feet?
And what is the base height of the PI, the 155-foot bonus height?
Their base height is 100 feet.
75.
75, so, oh, okay. They're all 75, they're all 75 feet, you're right. So, sorry about that. They are all 75 feet. All of the commercial parcels are 75 feet as a base height. And the bonus height for the darker hatch is, goes up, lets them go up to 155. And it's only the Delta Star that can avail 25, only 25 feet more to get to 100 feet.
So, we're, we're putting them in their own limited bonus program?
Yes. That was the idea for the transition, but it's worth reconsidering.
Yeah, I guess I am uncomfortable treating our largest industrial employer worse than everyone else. I'm not sure why we're doing that. It's also to the north part, where there's quite a bit of space between them and the residential district. I would propose treating Delta Star the same way, and maybe we put GW at the 125 you suggested, Adam. Maybe that makes the most sense.
John, I was suggesting, I think, like, the Delta Star at 125. But what I would, I'm, I hear what you're saying on the Delta Star side, so I'm happy to go to 155 to be okay with that on Delta Star, because I do think, you know, we're, we're sort of treating them separately. But I'm, I'm not really comfortable with the GW Williams one, because I do want to try to incentivize the resident housing developers to get more, you know, very low income housing. I think it's, you know, they can take advantage of it. They can, they don't have, when they do the density bonus, they don't have to, they get a bonus. They don't have to add, keep adding more affordable housing with that bonus. They get all those extra units, right? So, it's actually, I think it's actually more beneficial to them, because they're not building, they get this bonus that doesn't require them to build affordable housing. So, the trade-off, so that's why, if we said we're going to raise to 155, we're, we're not, I don't think we're, I mean, it's, it's better for them almost in, in that way, but we get more deeper affordability. That's kind of the trade-off.
You know, I think I'm comfortable agreeing with that. I'm glad we can be fair to Delta Star. But, you know, the reality is, I don't think 12 acres gets developed over there without a plan development. So, I think we're going to be in lengthy discussions to get it figured out either way. So, you know, I
Why do you think that it would be a plan development anyway, if they're getting 155 feet and, like, everything else?
I just think it's, there's so many moving parts, and we're going to want a contiguous park thing in there, and they're going to want more height probably than 155. And we might consider it if they're going to really deliver the park that we want in there or something like that, right? I mean, this is the parcel that's truly in play with the developer that is thinking bigger thoughts than others over there. I mean, you know, I'm just, I'm just predicting we end up doing a plan development. Maybe we don't. So, here what the rest of my colleagues think. But, you know, I'd rather see 125 there, but if you guys want to hold them all the way down to 100, I guess that's what we want to do.
Councilmember Dugan, for the GW Williams site, a plan development brings more uncertainty for the developer, because it involves negotiation. Right now, the developers have the advantage of the state density bonus law and ask for waivers and concessions. So, they are not inclined to go the plan development route, because they benefit from doing it in the easier way, which is the state density bonus law. So, they might avail the state density bonus law and develop the 11 acres they have there and not come for plan development.
Even at 100 feet, they would still likely not want to negotiate with us.
Well, they have 90 feet.
The developers said it'll take 200 to pencil, so.
Yeah, well, they have 90 feet, but with the state density bonus law, they can maximize 155 feet and not have to ask for a plan development.
Okay. All right. Then I guess this is academic, where we set residential height. So, I guess what I'm hearing is it doesn't matter, because they can do what they want to anyways.
Yeah, I mean, welcome to state law. We lose all control. We lose all local control for residential, thanks to state, state housing law. Neil, I see your hand raised. I think we're struggling on this Delta Star thing. What, your thoughts are still 155?
I mean, my thoughts are still 155. I, I agree with John's point of, I don't believe why we should limit our largest manufacturer in that area for those reasons, especially if others could easily build to 155. I don't think at that point in time, it ever tears away if they have that ability. So, I think if we can find community benefits with them and make sure that they, you know, they can find ways to be part of that community, then I would prefer that we allow that flexibility in our plan. I guess the caution I have is always what I've learned, is laws change. Sacramento changes, things change. So, it's very difficult for us to all guess at what's going to come back a lot of the time. I think, you know, for me, it's trying to, my point is, just so I'm clear, is what I think is going to help build this project quicker. And I think sometimes that's where my height kind of lands with this scenario, is I think it'll pencil. I don't know if it'll pencil currently on those lower numbers for them to have to do the larger bonuses. So, but we're very new into what pencils and what doesn't pencil in today's world, but I just want to make that clear. That's my concern for it. So, but I agree with the 155 for Delta Star. And obviously, my point for GW Williams was, remains the same, but I'm happy to follow the will of the council.
Can I, since you guys are talking about Delta Star, you think that that decreases their ability to sell that site? Because Delta Star is not, I've toured that site. They're, they're a huge manufacturer. They're not going to need a 15-story building for their manufacturing. You're, you're saying it impacts their ability to sell the property and profit from that?
No, I think it impacts their ability to work on the property. So, if they build transformers, and as AI and everything increases and demand for energy, those only get larger. And I think the larger expansion of that property, from my understanding, at some point in time, which may never happen, which may or may not, may be something that they need to do to continue to build the transformers of the demand that we are creating in our area. So, that's what I think. It's not necessarily the flip over of the site as much as it's their ability to use the site as a manufacturer.
Madam Mayor, I think I might agree with you that their current use doesn't suggest the need to 155. If we are interested in preserving them as an employer in town, it might not be in our interest to make this property even more lucrative for them to sell. So, I agree with you on that.
Okay. I feel like I just made things more confusing. Pranita, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I've toured the Delta Star site also. And I'm okay with the 155, only because it's the only one that is at 100 currently. And I think I'll be fast. And with the Williams site, I think the lower and the higher density we can get, the better.
So, you're at no changes to the GW Williams site, keep it at the 90. You agree with increasing the height for Delta Star to 155? And Adam, that's where you fall as well?
Yes.
Okay. That's four votes. I would have kept Delta Star shorter. I believe in transitions, but that's okay. So, does that give enough guidance for one and two? Okay, thank goodness. Now, we can move on to number three. Number three, does the council support increasing the publicly accessible open space requirement? Crystal, if you wouldn't mind going back to slide 29. Let's see. This has to do with, do we want to increase the percentage to 20%? Is that correct? From 15 or 10? What was the?
Yes. So, it's two ratios, 10% if the site's less than an acre, 15% public open space if it's more than an acre. So, this question's really teeing up really two paths. One, increasing it for all residential, increasing that 15% or a more focused approach aimed at increasing it just for larger sites, creating a larger ratio just for larger sites, for example, five acres.
Is there a slide where we can just read that? Because, maybe slide 19? I think it's slide 19. Yeah. Is 20% for sites over five acres unreasonable? I had asked Al earlier today what other cities do, but they do a different formula, so there was no direct comparison, I guess, I would.
Yeah, others, other cities that we looked at require open space based on a per-unit basis, for example, 200 square feet per unit. Our code right now requires 10% for other mixed-use districts. And so, our approach was to mimic that approach, but just dial it up, recognizing that open space is a priority in the district. So, we presented 15. So, if the council is interested in dialing that up further, we could explore what the impact would be if increasing it to 20%. And further explore what other cities are doing.
And just to be clear, this is for residential developments only, right? Or?
That's what we would recommend, is aiming it for the, aiming it at the two MU blocks, because open space requirements do still apply for the non-residential blocks. So, the input that we heard from the council was aiming for that park amenity on a residential block.
And, and then just finally, this is something that could be waived in concessions and waivers when they take the density bonus?
Correct. They could request reducing or even eliminating that, that requirement.
Councilmember Dugan, I see your hand.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The, I see the idea that maybe we take it from 15 to 20% for lots over five acres. We only have one such owner in the district, right? And does that, is this spot zoning? I mean, are we able to do such a thing?
I think one thing to keep in mind is, there could be a potential for assemblage of sites that could then result in something larger than five acres, even on the, the 75-block south south of Taylor Way. So it's possible that there would be a project that results in a site that's larger than five acres through merging lots.
I guess where I'm at on this, if we've always required 10%, I think a 50% increase to that, to 15% is a reasonable place that I think our developers could embrace and get around and not immediately want to use their, their waiver on. I think if we double the requirement up to 20%, I think we're, they're just gonna waive it anyways. And I am uncomfortable treating, you know, yes, maybe someone else will aggregate five acres, but I think we all know we're talking about the GW Williams site here. So I'm uncomfortable just singling one owner out like that. So I would propose a flat 15% as staff has recommended.
Okay, Councilmember Leighton?
Rendell, just one question, just so I can visualize it. 15% of the five-acre site would be like what size park in comparison in the city?
I, we'll double check the math, but I think it results in about an acre, but we'll double check the math.
For the GW Williams site?
I think, oh, okay, I'm sorry. I misheard the question. I think, is the question, what would 15% amount if the full GW's block were redeveloped?
Sure. If we hit that 15%.
Right.
What, what size? Give me a comparative park.
About two acres.
Give me a comparative park in St. Carlos.
I think L'Oriola is two and a half acres.
Okay. I mean, I guess my general opinion on it is, is I think it's, I would follow staff's recommendation on it. I think it fits more into the Parks Master Plan of how we should probably weave into what we want to do with a park over there. If it's gonna be smaller than L'Oriola, is there a better decision for us as a council to then maybe find more financial benefits to take advantage and expand L'Oriola or make it bigger over on those sites, right? I mean, I, it's the hard, we have like 15 things going on at once, so that's my general opinion. I don't know if that makes any sense, but I'm fine to follow staff's recommendation. I also think it should be added to the Parks Master Plan to figure out what a two-acre site may look like, or what is that compared to like if we expanded some financial ability to acquire property to expand L'Oriola. But I think those are two very separate scenarios, but for planning purposes, that's my request.
Yeah, thanks, Neil. And I note the second part, portion of item three is, should the specific plan include policies and actions directing the city to pursue land acquisition for the creation of a city-owned public park? So would you be in support of that language?
I'm, I'm not in support of it if it's, we're gonna acquire land within this district to try to create another Burton or to try to create something the size bigger than L'Oriola. I'm in support of it is, is if it's gonna find some sort of financial way for us to expand what we have in the east side, like expand L'Oriola to a larger area or a larger footprint. That's my support of it. I'm fine, I just think it would cause too much, I think it would be a goal and aspiration wouldn't be able to reach, to reach that size property or acquisition in this district. I think we're better served in the Parks Master Plan figuring out how to expand maybe L'Oriola down there, if that makes sense to everyone.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would agree with Councilmember Dugan that 15% is sufficient for that. I think that, and I would, you know, I think regardless if, you know, if we, if we play it forward and then the GW Williams property gets developed and they, you know, even if they didn't take the density, take the open space piece, you know, we're not, they're not required to build a park, it's just open space, right? So it's not like, it could be like some walkthrough areas with, you know, a fountain in the center or something without, so to me, we're better off leaving that at 15% so there is some open space. But then I think we should, I would take a hybrid of Councilmember Leighton and just say, let's look at either expanding L'Oriola, improving it. And, and I'm open to saying, if we can find a few acres that we can buy from another property and create a small park there, then we should, we should consider that. If we're gonna get money, you know, dollars for the bonus heights for the commercial properties, then maybe that's something we, we look at and do.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think two and a half acres is a nice sized park, and I think this community is the most impacted, and that's what we heard loud and clear is that they want a park. So I'm okay with that. I'm also okay with a city-owned public park. I think we, we're all looking for a place to have a community center, so at some point in time, that's gonna be an issue.
Good point about the community center, yes. I too, I think 15% is reasonable, so I'm okay with that. I, I agree with Adam's hybrid approach. I think that, you know, we can always look at finding space at L'Oriola, but we're also talking about adding thousands of people in this new neighborhood, thousands of people. So I think, you know, we should keep our, as one of the public callers tonight said, be creative and think about, you know, how we do find space down there for a community amenity. I think that, I feel like, this came up many years ago, I feel like maybe somewhere in our general plan, we have a statement that for every like neighborhood, it's the city's goal to have a park. So if that is in our general plan and that is our value as a city, we should be looking for a park in this new neighborhood too. We, that, that is in our general plan. So I see Al nodding, so thank you for confirming that. I also would like to suggest that we add, we added a value statement about cleaning up contaminated soil. I would love a value statement about a park and how it relates to significant public health benefits, because we know that open space is good for public health and mental health. So I, you know, I would, I would, I would value a value statement in here because I feel like our east side vision plan talked more about parks, and I feel like that's maybe missing a little bit in this plan, is a little more focus on the open space and its value in creating new neighborhoods as part of a complete community for, for, for new residents. So I don't know. I'm throwing that out there. I don't know if you guys would sign on to that, but I think that that would be an important, easy few sentences to add.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I would support a value statement concerning a usable park. It's, yes, I support that. I think your point more generally is, you know, I would hope staff would pull out our east side vision plan and look at some of that really good work we did and roll some of those standards into this specific plan as well. I'm sure you've already done that to some extent, but I think it feels like we're at the point now where we can pull in some of those specifics, and I think it'll just enrich this plan.
Councilmember Rack, did you have a comment?
I, I'm happy to support your proposal.
Okay. Okay, Vice Mayor says yes? Okay, great. Thank you. Number four, should the community benefits approach reconsider a fee option to provide a more certain path to implementation of community benefits? So this is the $20 fee. I heard Councilmember Leighton say earlier the importance of an escalator. I agree with that. I think we should definitely have that for inflationary purposes. So I'm open to hearing councils talk about the fee. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I'm always much more interested in incentivizing developers to get things developed. When we get money, it sits and builds and accounts, and it's seven, eight years later before we figure something out, when it's more expensive and, you know, we do a good job on some things, but, you know, Cherry Street's a million bucks a door, so maybe we're not the greatest at it. But that said, I respect our community development director's professional opinion on this, and there's a lot of moving parts. And as, you know, I, I look forward to seeing it. I don't know if we're doing another study session. I really do want to understand the scoring system or, you know, that other piece that we're putting in here. I don't have a good, good sense of that, but I accept your recommendation that the $20 fee is, is the way to go, so I'll support that.
Councilmember Rack?
I would say I support that as well, provided that there is the, for that escalator that was referred to.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I guess I'm not comfortable supporting this unless I see numbers, so I'd like maybe a study session on it to see what, what, I like, I kind of like the menu where you pick and choose, like, you know, park downtown. I, I'm, maybe I'm used to it, but I kind of like that format, and that is new to me.
Madam Mayor, if I may add, we, we could do a hybrid approach. So where you would prioritize the community benefits that you see that is needed in this area or even in the rest of the community, and have the $20 a foot. So the developer could choose one or the other, or half of this and half of that. So you would have, I think that hybrid approach is really a good way to go.
Councilmember Leighton?
Thanks, Al. I thought we were always doing the hybrid approach, and so, okay. I support the fee, as I said earlier, with the escalator as well. And I think I may disagree with you, John, in the sense I do think we do well at prioritizing when we focus on what we want to prioritize on, hence our value statement we just added to it. So I think the fee does allow us that ability as a council to really focus in and do things like acquire parkland if that's where we want to focus on. It just requires us to focus on it and follow our value statements.
Okay, thank you. I will support the hybrid as well, although I really appreciated, John, your comments earlier about what Redwood City does, and it's something that I've harped on as well. Elko Yards is an incredible development, and they have childcare, it opens space and like everything. And I would, I, you know, I continue to hope that we can attain that at some point. And, you know, whatever we can do to kind of figure out what Redwood City is doing to get all of those great things out of developers, maybe it's their gatekeeper policy, I don't know. I, so, anyway, I agreed with you on that, so thanks. All right, moving on to number five, does the council support staff's recommended policies for future non-conforming uses in the district? We had a lot of discussion about the non-conforming and public comment on that. Is there another slide? Because there was like three recommendations for the non-conforming.
I believe it's slide 24.
There you go. Thoughts on these three modifications? Councilmember Dugan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, this is a balance, right? I mean, we want to be very fair and I think generous with our existing owners. They didn't look for this, they weren't asking for this. They are being disrupted, whether we do anything or not. The disruption's coming from all the inbound development interests. So just to be clear, what we're trying to do here is get in front of all this development that's coming, that is disrupting them. And any operators in this area that don't think they're currently being developed should drive that half mile south in Old County and see the 20 vacant acres that Alexandria has scraped for their next life science development, right? So that was coming to the northeast area, and that is why we put down a moratorium, and that's why we're getting in front of this, just so folks understand. But that said, I do think we want to be generous in allowing those existing uses to remain. So, and it is a balance because we also want this area to turn over, but I think that's happening anyways. So I just don't want to hurt our existing valued businesses in the meantime. So I appreciate these questions. I think where I come out is, on the first one, increase the length of time. I would propose two years instead of six months. Six months is very quick. You know, we've heard it's, it's hard to even, you know, you can easily have a six-month vacancy on one of these larger commercial properties, especially during a downturn. But I think two years of vacancy, and yeah, you probably should sell it to that developer. Require a minor use permit, I support that as well. I think, you know, our instructions to staff can be to be generous here. For some period of time, in 15, 20 years, we might be a lot tighter on that, and I think we can stay in that loop. And then I appreciated the mayor's idea of adding a percentage to that. It doesn't have to be completely vacant, but maybe if it's more than 80% vacant, then it would require that minor use permit to reestablish the non-conforming use.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. John, thanks for the, for kicking this off. I think, I mean, I think if staff is comfortable with the two years and they think that's the right amount, I'm, I'm comfortable with that as well. I, on the third one, I agree with the mayor's proposal that we find a percentage threshold for, you know, if, you know, buildings have multiple, you know, significantly multiple tenants. And then I'm okay with the minor use permit as well. I think, you know, someone, one of the speakers mentioned like that biotech wanting a minor, a minor use permit, but I thought they would be in general conforming, so they wouldn't need that to move forward. What I would, I guess one question I would have is, is, you know, if we, let's say there's a project that happened, a developer or, you know, a business owner after, you know, a non-conforming, some, they leave, they get two years, they get a minor use permit, and then someone leaves again, do we kick the whole cycle off again? Or at some point, do we say, okay, it's now been 10 years, we're not gonna let you continue to just keep rotating in non-conforming uses? So I just wonder if there's a cap, you know, if, if someone leaves a second time, you know, what, what number of years do we say, well, you know, we're, we're not achieving our goals if we keep just kicking it down the road?
I think once the commission, or assuming it goes down to MUP, once the zoning administrator approves the non-conforming use to go back, that clock restarts, so that they would get an additional two years if that MUP were approved.
I guess I'm wondering, like, do we want to let them get a second MUP at that point? Because I feel like then we're just, I mean, we're never gonna reach our goals potentially.
And that goes to a point that Al made earlier, amortizing the, the opportunity. Is that something that you would bring back to us as a more formal proposal, or how do, how do we move forward with that idea?
I think that Councilmember Rack is correct, that you could just get multiple MUPs over the years unless you put a amortization period into the zoning for that. So what you would do is allow somebody to get the MUP, but then after five years or seven years, and we can come back to you with something we think is reasonable. But, you know, I would think like five to seven years is what you typically see, is that over that period, you know, you can't get more than, you know, one or two of those in a five-year period that's, it ends after a certain period, so we can bring that back. We can add it on.
I'd appreciate getting a recommendation from staff on that, because I do, I don't want it to be sort of a never-ending where we just push the can down the road. So I appreciate Al's proposal, and I'd like to kind of get back in, in front of us.
To keep it simple, we could just say no more than three MUPs per parcel, period. You know, not try to think about years and timelines, and 10 years from now, when this is well underway, we could revisit this too. Just, just thinking. But I'm, I'm comfortable, let staff think about it and think through best practice and what others have done.
Okay, great. Councilmember Leighton?
I'd agree with everyone so far. I just ask staff, I don't know if, I would probably agree with John's last point, that I don't believe this is a years thing or a set time thing as much as it's a, how we want to, once the buildings start to turn over and once, how does that look? I guess that's how I, I'm viewing as it, as, so that may be more of a one or two minor use permits being granted. I mean, I am in favor of what's there staying there. I am in favor of that overall, I think, but overall, as it does turn over or as they become more attractive to developers, I want to make sure that our plan is the one that's coming next. So I don't know what that looks like, but I think as you go through the, when it comes back for the final draft, that will hopefully be clear.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to agree with everyone. I would like recommendations from staff regarding either years or time, and then that was it.
Okay, I'll agree with all of that as well. I do think that as we are looking at these new policies with the vacancy rates and then the amortization periods, I think there's a difference between single tenant places and like multiple tenant places. And so how we divide that up will be important, because if you allow three conditional use permits or minor use permits, that, those are all scooped up by tenants at the same time versus someone continually turning over, that time versus someone continually turning over, that, you know, that it does get a little different. So, those are my, that's my feedback, but I, I agree with everything my colleagues have said. Is that the last one to be finished? Oh, my gosh. Thank you. Okay. Great job, everyone. And thank you again, Rendell, for that great presentation and keeping us on track. That brings us to agenda setting. Do any of my colleagues have an item for, oh, sorry. That would have brought us to the public hearing for 12A. I hope no one is online waiting for us, but I think that we, if you guys are comfortable, we can give direction to push that to our next meeting, since it's already 11:20. And that is a very meaty presentation and discussion. So, I've been told by staff that it's okay for us to push. Would you?
I'm second, third, fourth.
Do we need a motion to push that?
Motion to table item 12, whatever number that is, 12.
My recommendation is, since it's a public hearing, that you open the public hearing and then continue it to a date certain, which I think would be the meeting of September...
22nd.
22nd. Thank you.
Why? Oh. Okay. Well, we will work on some agenda setting later this week with the city manager. So, okay, I will entertain a motion to, well, the public hearing is open now. Do we need to close the public hearing?
Yeah. I think you only need to continue it yet. It's a good point.
We'll take a motion to continue.
Madam Mayor, I move to continue the public hearing to September 22nd.
Second.
Third. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Crystal, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Leighton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Benkettash?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
All right. That brings us to agenda setting. Do any of my colleagues have an item for agenda setting this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we are adjourned. We'll see you in two weeks. Take care. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. I'll be there in person.
Yay. Thanks, Adam. Bye.